The appointed hour of six o'clock having been reached, my call this meeting of the Amherst zoning board of appeals to order. My name is Steve Judge. As ZDA chair, I want to welcome everyone to this meeting. Pursuant to chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021 and extended by chapter 22 of the Acts of 2022, this meeting will be conducted via remote meetings. Members of the public who wish to access this meeting may do so via Zoom or by telephone. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. Additionally, the meetings are recorded and may be viewed via the town of Amherst YouTube channel and its ZDA webpage. In accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 48 and Article 10, Special Permit Granting Authority of the Amherst Zoning Bylaw. Hold on, Maureen, you just changed my screen. Just a second, I gotta get my side button. Get it back up, excuse me.
So sorry.
That's all right, I'll get it back up.
I didn't realize, I wasn't paying attention, sorry.
That's all right. Let's see, ah, in accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 48 and Article 10 of the Special Permit, that is the Special Permit Granting Authority of the Amherst Zoning Bylaw, this public meeting has been duly advertised and notice thereof has been posted and mailed to parties at interest. We will begin with a roll call of the ZDA members in panel for tonight's meeting. I'm present, but I'm not on the panel until the next two items. Mr. Maxfield?
Here.
Mr. Meadows?
Here.
Ms. Parks?
Here.
Mr. Gilbert?
Here.
And Ms. Marshall?
Here.
Also attending tonight is Maureen Pollack-Planner. And Maureen, do we have anybody else in the town that's going to appear tonight?
Um, not at the moment, um, the building commissioner may be joining us in a little bit, uh, depending on the schedule.
The zoning board of appeals is a quasi judicial body that operates under the authority of Chapter 48 of the General Laws of the Commonwealth for the purpose of promoting the health, safety, inconvenience, and the general welfare of the inhabitants of the town of Amherst. One of the most important elements of the Amherst zoning bylaw is section 10.38. Specific findings from this section must be made for all of our decisions. All hearings and meetings are open to the public and recorded by town staff. The procedure is as follows. The petitioner presents the application to the board during the hearing, after which the board will ask questions for clarification and additional information. After the board has completed its questions, the board will seek public input. The public speaks with the permission of the chair. If a member of the public wishes to speak, they should so indicate by using the raised hand function on their screen. The chair, with the assistance of the staff, will call upon the people wishing to speak. When you are recognized, provide your name and address to the board for the record. All questions and comments must be addressed to the board. The board will normally hold public hearings where information about the project and input from the public is gathered, followed by public meetings for each. The public meeting portion is where the board deliberates and is generally not an opportunity for public comment. If the board feels it has enough information and time, it will decide upon the applicants' applications tonight. Each petition heard by the board is distinct and evaluated on its own merits, and the board is not ruled by precedent. Statutorily, the special, for a special permit, the board has 90 days from the date, from the close of the hearing to file the decision. For a variance, the board has 100 days from the date of filing to file its decision. No decision is final until a written decision is signed by the sitting board members and is filed with the town clerk's office. Once the decision is filed with the town clerk, there's a 20-day appeal period for an agreed party to contest the decision with a relevant judicial body in Superior Court. After the appeal period, the permit must be recorded at the registered deeds to take effect. Tonight's agenda is a public hearing, ZBA-FY 2023-05, Otelco Inc., Richard Pasciutto requests a special permit to modify a previously approved special permit, ZBA-FY 1964-32 and ZBA-FY 1981-46 to incorporate a new site plan and to allow the construction of fiber telecommunications cabinets as a complementary principal use to the existing residential use under sections 3.01, 3.340.1, and 10.38 of the zoning bylaw, located at 615 Main Street, MAP ID 14B, dash 242, general residence RG and commercial COM zoning districts. Members sitting for this panel are Mr. Maxfield as the chair, Ms. Parks, Mr. Meadows, Mr. Gilbert, and Ms. Marshall. Next door to business is ZBA-FY 2023-04, Redwood Construction Inc. requests a special permit to modify the previously approved special permit, ZBA-FY 2018-21, for the proposed modifications to conditions 1, 6, 11, 12, 19, condition 4, 21, 22, 23, 25, 28, among possible others, as they relate to the proposed changes to the site plan, site amenities, building plans, and management plan under section 10.33 and 10.38 of the zoning bylaw, located at Renew, Amherst, 266 East Hadley Road, MAP 16D parcel 13, neighborhood residence RN zoning district. This is continued from our September 8th hearing. Members sitting for this are myself, Ms. Parks, Mr. Maxfield, Ms. Marshall, and Mr. Gilbert. And ZBA-FY 2023-06, Loomis Communities Inc. requests a special permit to modify the previously approved special permits, ZBA-FY 1985-04, ZBA-FY 1988-45, and ZBA-FY 1990-8 for the expansion of an existing planned unit residential development or PRRD with a proposed construction of the three additional, three building additions, including a pool pavilion, meeting room, enclosed atrium, and a three-story residential addition with nine new multifamily dwellings. And for amending conditions 6, 9, and 10, under ZBA-FY 90-8, under Article 7 and sections 4.4, 10.33, 10.38 of the zoning bylaw, located at Applewood, 1 Spencer Drive, MAP 25A, parcel 43, outline residence RO and PRRD overlay zoning districts. Members sitting on this panel are myself, Ms. Parks, Mr. Meadows, Mr. Gilbert, and Mr. Maxfield. Following that is a time period for general public comment on matters not before the board tonight and other, other business not anticipated within the last 48 hours. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Maxfield to, um, to chair the first panel and the first application. There you go, Dylan.
Hey, Mr. Judge. All right, uh, who do we have representing the applicant tonight? Uh, Maureen, you're muted.
Oh, thank you, uh, we have, uh, Richard, um, in attendance, he's representing the applicant, let me, I need to make him a, I'm trying to promote you as a panelist, uh, Richard. You might have to press a button.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
That we can, uh, before we get started, does anybody have any disclosures that they need to make? Uh, hearing none, uh, go ahead if you'd like to go ahead and, uh, or actually before we get started with that, I want to mention that we did the, uh, site visit, uh, yesterday on the 21st. Uh, at that site visit, we viewed the location where it was going to be, uh, showed what the dimensions roughly looked like. And we're just giving kind of a, a, a brief overview of the project, if you want to go ahead. There's anything else anybody wants to add to that? If not, we can go ahead and, uh, start the presentation.
And would you, would you like to mention, uh, sorry to interrupt, uh, would you like just to mention the submissions? That we, I don't know if, um, you have that list in front of you.
Um, I'm looking here, just a moment. Yes, I have the applicant submissions here. Uh, is that what we're talking about, Maureen?
Yep, and then the, uh, yep, exactly.
Okay, we have the, um, ZBA-FY 2023-05, special permit application, received a management plan, an easement sketch, a plan set, uh, prepared by Centerline Engineering Services dated September 20th, 2022, which includes the title sheet, the site plan, the compound plan, and equipment plan, uh, details, and then another list of details. Uh, we have the narrative for 60 or, uh, 615 Main Street, special permit application for, uh, Otelco Fiber Installation, uh, sample easement photograph, received figure one, custom dual bay enclosure, 300 by, uh, 225, figure two, a fenced stock photo, figure three, the propane tank detail. And obviously a specification sheet, OptiTech indoor local conversions cabinet, generation three series, email from Richard, uh, Pasciutto, I don't know if I'm saying that right, my apologies. Got it, uh, that's dated August, uh, 22nd, 2022, and a letter of intent and authorization. Do you need to run through the staff submissions as well, Maureen?
No, I, I think that, that's fine, um. I guess, um, the one, the one staff submission of, um, of importance would be comments from the wetland administrator dated today, September 22nd, and then the special permit decisions from 1964-32 and 1981-46.
Got it, all right, thank you. Uh, with that in mind, uh, yeah, you can go ahead and get started.
Uh, good evening, Chair, members of the board, my name is Rich Pasciutto, I represent Otelco Fiber or Go Net Speed. Um, Otelco Fiber, uh, for the sake of the set of the plans, is a fiber provider that's providing high-speed fiber access to the town of Amherst, Massachusetts, similar to Comcast and FiOS and other, uh, high-speed, uh, providers. Uh, they're interested in bringing some competition to the, the market and offering services to not only the residents of 615 Main Street, but the residents of Amherst overall. Um, we identified as a part of the process, areas where Otelco has access to existing overhead fiber lines, and in this case, uh, the reason 615 Main Street was of a particular interest is Otelco has access to fiber lines that run on Main Street and College Street, or College Road. And the goal is to be able to attach to those fiber lines which they have, uh, lease rights to, install equipment, and then become a third-party, uh, provider of internet service or fiber service to the town. So my job as a site acquisition agent for Otelco is to go out, find those locations that best suit their design, uh, determine the zoning requirement, permitting requirement, uh, completed design, get a lease with the underlying landlord, and, uh, develop a site. The site itself is a 20 by 20-foot chain link fenced in area. It's cleared, cleaned, finished with, uh, fabric and stone, prevent weeds from coming up. This, um, installation here is going to be improved with two pads for cabinets. A little bigger than a college dorm refrigerator. A generator should Amherst lose power and a propane backup. We would have hooked up to, um, uh, direct gas, but, uh, there's no direct gas available now in the town of Amherst. So we, we located a spot on the property at 16 Main Street, we submitted a set of plans for review. There was a concern from your conservation commission agent, um, Aaron Jakes, that we might be, uh, close to a, uh, established wetlands that was identified back in 2019. We redesigned the site and moved it to be 132 feet away from the wetlands to the south, 127 feet away from the wetlands to the north, um, and between, on existing right-of-way on private property and would otherwise be considered a relatively highly vegetated area. I was with the board, uh, yesterday, when I say vegetation, it's more like, um, four-foot stands of ragweed, um, thistle, uh, and bramble. And it's relatively dense. So the idea would be to, way to locate equipment so that it's, um, almost invisible to residents and to people driving by. The way the site is designed is we're cut into this, um, dense area of weeds. We install a six-foot chain link fence surrounding the 20 by 20-foot compound. We finish it and, um, we hook up to our fiber lines and we've become a provider to the town. Uh, the, we're on a, uh, site that was originally permitted for a multi, uh, multi-use facility as an apartment complex. Uh, there's an existing gate valve in a closed-in area that we originally had located, but we've since moved. Um, and our current location, I think satisfies, uh, the setback requirements, um, from side yard, front yard, and wetlands. I got an email later, earlier this afternoon saying that, uh, Ms. Jakes was, uh, was happy with the design we provided because we kind of really jockeyed the, uh, the, uh, the site to best accommodate, um, everyone's concerns and needs. If you see the plan that's up in front of you now, you'll see that, um, there's two maple trees, and then between two maple trees, uh, it's the edge of the mowed area, uh, and when they say mowed, on the right-hand side is, is grass, I mean, very nice lawn. Right at that edge of that line is really dense vegetation. So we're going to be, um, installing that 20 by 20-foot, uh, stone-finished area inside that, um, inside that, uh, side yard and I think that kind of just, it's, it's a, it's a relatively clean, simple installation and, um, I think that's all you have to, that's it for me.
Thank you, um. With that, I guess we can go into questions here, uh, from the panel. Uh, my first question here would be, uh, the maple tree that's right in front of that, is that staying or is that going to be removed? It looked like it, and seeing these plans, it looks like both of those maple trees are staying, is that the idea?
Both, both trees will stay, um, will most likely, uh, just do a, um, a stone accessway to the, to the swing gates. The, all we need is, uh, an access for a truck with a, a small boom to drop the equipment. And then, because there's no overhead lines that's going to be installed, there's no, you know, wires, there's no, um, no tower, uh, it's, it's, uh, we don't need, uh, a great deal of height and access, so, uh, and speaking with Otelco, they can easily get, um, into the site, drop the cabinets, and, uh, and not mess to the trees.
And then, um, my second question here is, what is the, um, so it's going to be a, a kind of gravel rock pathway getting there, what is going to be the surface inside that fenced area?
So we're going to, um, cut and clear and grub down probably six inches. Remove all the, um, the, the, the seed and base, uh, refill with stone, well, cover with, you, you, there you go, there's a cross-section there, thanks very much, uh, Maureen. Um, you know, there's going to be, uh, a, a compacted grade, then we'll be putting in a, a fabric to prevent weeds from coming up, and then, um, stone, the two, uh, the, I'm sorry, the four slabs for the equipment, and, um, it should be extremely low maintenance, uh, if you recall on the property, there is a, uh, gate valve to the south of our installation with a similar installation, and then two, which I understand have been, um, gravel, um, areas installed by Aspen Chase for having had provided pods and storage areas at some point when people are moving in and out, I think they use that area to put a pod, you know, uh, utility storage on grade, also stoned, also very unweeded, very well-kept, um, and, uh, it's going to be in a similar nature, so when you look from the accessway to the fence, there'll be, uh, a gravel drive, no, uh, impervious material. Um, two swing gates, you open the swing gates, that entire area will be clean and neat with, um, with, uh, with stone.
And then, my last question, I'm going to open it up to the rest of the board here, um. The device is in there, what, what kind of noise would they make? Would it be like an electric buzzing, would there be no noise, would it be something?
From the, uh, from the, uh, two cabins themselves, there are two small, um, cooling fans, um, which will provide no noise outside the lease area. Um, it's, it would be like installing it like, uh, similar to very, very similar to a, um, a dorm refrigerator, and, uh, only when they overheat will a small fan come on. Uh, no air conditioning, just, uh, regular circulated air. Um, the only real generating, um, uh, anything that's going to generate noise would be the, the propane generator, which is a standard, uh, uh, commercial generator, but only to power up those two cabinets, I'm not trying to power up the entire complex, so, and it's fueled by propane, which is also very quiet, so, um, this will be the, probably the least, uh, noise providing, um, installation on the property should power go out. Uh, there is going to be, uh, an average of a monthly test of that generator. Um, they'll come out, test, well, actually, or test remotely just to make sure that it fires up and fueled. Um, but like most installations, there's going to be batteries in the cabinets that'll last for eight hours of a typical shutdown and then a typical outage. Then it should extend past that, the generator will, um, fire up and power the cabinets.
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and open this up, uh, Ms. Marshall.
Thank you, um. Oops, all right, so I don't see the plan anymore, that's okay. Um, you've mentioned another piece of equipment, somebody else's on the site, a gate valve, I think, I just don't know what that is, what is that and whose is it?
If you expand, if you expand the plan out a little bit and look a little bit south, I think there's a, a gate station which typically takes a high-pressure gas line and converts it into a low-pressure gas line, which exists, existing on a, uh, on the property prior to our installation. I'm not sure when it was installed, um, but we had identified that as a, so we consider ourselves to be a quasi-utility, and when you see a utility use on a property, you kind of want to, you know, snuggle up to next to it, say, utility and utility, it usually makes it, uh, better for, um, residents to know that there's two utilities. But we didn't, that's, I'm not sure how the gas company got that in there, they, that was installed when, prior to us.
Sure, okay, thank you, and my, my other question, um, uh, it, so your plan is to, to basically hide this
Yes.
uh, in, in the weeds. And, and they're very beautiful, actually, I think it's quite colorful. I want, but since I understand that you're only leasing this 20 by 20 area, do you have an agreement with Aspen to, to not mow? Like not mow down all those weeds and then expose, expose this to be?
No, no, so, um, with, with Aspen, um, so we had our original agreement with Aspen to, to install right next to their unit, um, which, which was in a lawn area, and, um, we'll, we'll work with Aspen because we only leased a 20 by 20-foot area, there's, there's no, um, requirement to go beyond 20 by 20-foot, and the idea would be to to cut it as tight to 20 by 20-foot as possible because typically in a situation like this, the board might require me to put abreviations around the side of it, which would, we, we would have done. But in this case, I have a six-foot chain link fence and, and that, um, barrier, and you could see when we were out there, it was very dense, it was very, very organized, um, and if you just cut in 20 feet on either side, that would be the perfect surround for a six-foot, you know, chain link fence.
And I agree, my concern is whether you don't have control over that vegetation, so do you have, has Aspen agreed not to mow it down?
No, well, you're right, A, we don't have control of that vegetation, we only have control of our 20 by 20-foot area, um. I, I don't think Aspen Chase is going to change the entire, uh, topography of that property now to push all those weeds back to accommodate us. Um, that would be a huge expense for them to, time to take, and I have no, you know, I'm not interested in, in, in clear cutting, um, that barrier. It is, when you look at it from the road, it is one beautiful, clear line of, of, uh, of growth. Um, and I think it's been maintained like that, so I don't think, um, Aspen Chase has the intention of cutting that down, that's, I think it's part of the feature of the property.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Uh, questions from, uh, other members? All right, uh, seeing none, we'll go ahead and we can open this up to, uh, questions from members of the public. Um, we do that, if you have any questions, please go ahead and use the, uh, raised hand function. Uh, we'll go ahead and call on you, uh, we'll have a chance to speak, please address your comments directly to the board. Now, let's see, do we have anyone, public comment on this? Not seeing any? All right. Seeing none, we can move on past that, uh, do we want to go ahead, Maureen, sorry, procedurally, we close the public hearing and move to a public meeting, is that correct?
Uh, no, uh, you could actually just, uh, not need to make a motion and, um, go into your, um, deliberation period, but keep the public hearing open in case, um, more information is requested or you would like to, um, seek, uh, input from the public.
Got it, um, all right, well, with that in mind, I'll say, kind of looking at this project, um, as far as things as we're concerned about here, I, I think it's pretty straightforward, um, building of the, the 20 by 20 on this lot here, uh, this doesn't, uh, exceed their lot coverage, am I correct about that, Maureen? I don't think I saw anything about that, but they have the lot coverage to do this?
They do, this is a very minor 20 by 20 area, um, and then plus the, the little new, uh, gravel access, uh, strip. Um, and, uh, it, it's been determined by, uh, inspection services that, that there is, um, plenty of, um, they don't exceed the law coverage for this property.
Excellent, all right, uh, in that case, I guess we can go on to, uh, conditions and then start reviewing for specific findings here? Am I correct about that, Maureen?
Uh, yeah, so, uh, if the board, uh, would like to go through the sections, uh, we could start with, uh, section 3.01. And, uh, I can pull up, um, some of my notes, so unfortunately I wasn't able to produce a project application report for this proposal here tonight, but I do have, um, some keynotes here, um, so um, I'll, I'll let you, Dylan, uh, run with the show, but the first, um, section that you could look at is, is, uh, under section 3.01, uh, the development or operation on a single lot of more than one dwelling or more than one, one of the principal uses described in section 3.3 is expressly prohibited except where the principal uses are clearly complementary to each other or whether otherwise provided by the, by this bylaw.
Yeah, and I think that, uh, definitely meets that threshold, we already have, uh, utilities there on that lot allowed in the special permit, um. And then we have, uh, is it 3.3401, right?
Mm-hmm, yes, uh, so the use that's being proposed here under this application uh, would be, uh, considered under, uh, 3.340.1. Um, and so, uh, which includes, uh, communication use, uh, excluding any office storage or repair use unless otherwise allowed by the regulations of the district. And so the proposed use, which is, uh, fiber tele, tele, telecommunication is a use permitted by special permit by the ZBA, um, pursuant to, um, the section 3.340.1 and 10.38 of the zoning bylaw.
Uh, and then, do we have anything else in 3.3 here, um?
No, those would, yeah. And so, just to recap about, um, you know, there's, there's an existing principal use on the property, which is Aspen Chase Apartments, which has been there for many, uh, decades, and, um, and has been approved by the ZBA, um, um, many decades ago, and so the applicant is proposing a construction of a fiber telecommunication cabinet as a secondary principal use on this property. And so the board needs to, um, you know, determine whether it's complementary to one another, um, in that, um, so as you said, Dylan, that, you know, there are utility systems on the property, there's, um, the utility towers, uh, along the property as well, and, um, you know, the tenants of this property will most likely benefit from the installation of this fiber optic telecommunication because it'll provide faster internet and all that kind of stuff.
Yeah, I believe that we can find, make that finding that this is a complementary use, that it is providing a utility that will be utilized on this property, uh, and beyond, um. Um. Then we have, is there anything else from section three, or can we move to ten point three eight?
Um, you can move on, but uh before you get, uh, yeah, actually, we can, um, yep, let's move on to ten point three eight.
Okay, um, see, everything else there, we we need the dimensional requirements.
Correct, yep.
Yep, alright, then we'll go on to ten point three eight, um. Ten point three eight uh zero and three eight one, uh, proposal suitably located in the neighborhood in which it's proposed, um. We have um a review here, the applicant opposing uh fiber telecommunications cabinets, principal use, um. Believe we can make that finding as well for a three point uh. Point three two, three three, three five and three seven, um. This uh proposal provides the six foot uh high fence around the cabinets. The applicant is not proposing any landscape uh or lighting, so I don't think we have to worry about that, uh, Ms. Marshall?
Yeah, I just uh wanted to make it explicit, really just for the benefit of the. Anyone listening or watching this, that there, that the applicant is not building a structure. It's not a building, there's no roof, it's just four pieces of relatively small equipment inside a fence.
Yes.
Thank you.
And then, um. Yeah, we're not, um, yeah, I'm not concerned about the noise, um. And then, we do, we don't have any concerns, I think, yeah, the, as the applicant has stated, the screening there provided by that vegetation, we think that that's adequate. I think so anyways, you do agree, Ms. Marshall, of the of the board? Alright, wonderful.
Yes. Great talk.
Huh, point three eight four, uh, adequate appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation of proposed use, um. Find that utility services are found to be adequate for the operation of the existing and proposed use. So, point ten point three eight six, uh. Proposal ensures that in its performance with the parking and signage regulations, uh, articles seven and eight respectively. So, the applicant proposes the following for the gravel access drive, prepare the subgrade and compacted gravel base with eight inch depth. Appropriate grading and drainage with a four inch compacted uh process aggregate. Section seven point one zero one requires minimum twelve, you know, this, um. Yeah, and there's no signage proposed here, we'll move on to ten point.
So.
Go ahead.
If I may, oh, so um, so section seven point one. Uh, uh, yeah, seven point one oh one requires that a minimum total of twelve inch depth, um. Be provided for graining, uh, for gr- grading and drainage. And um, so the applicant um is only provide, providing a subgrade. It um with uh compacted gravel base of um of a eight inch depth. So it really should be a minimum of twelve inches, um, not eight. Um, so technically, the board would need uh, would need to grant. The proposal a waiver from from that um depth amount, or you uh may wish to ask. The applicant to update its plans in order to meet this section.
Um, would it, uh? Would the the building inspectors or uh inspection services consider on this one, is it something that? They believe is necessary, because I think for the the water runoff, I think they would have a better idea of what would be best in this project than. Um. That I would, is this something that we should hold off on, uh? Rob, do you wanna?
Yeah.
Want to weigh in here?
Sure, the um, the bylaws standard, uh, design standard requires a twelve inch minimum for the base. And then a two inch finished material, uh, but I think, you know, for the such a limited. Uh, amount of use that this driveway would get. Uh, I think as long as the base materials are appropriate, you know, the subgrade materials are appropriate. For when, where they start building that eight inch base from, uh, it should be fine, so I don't have any concerns with uh. A a waiver being granted, and you know, I think we we have the uh opportunity to adjust that. If we see something in the field with the soils conditions, that would suggest something better be done.
Alright, and then if we want to go ahead and and improve this section and grant that waiver, we want to include a condition that that would need to be. Uh, approved by uh your department, or would we want to, or is that that's something that's automatically going to be done?
I think it'd be appropriate to include in the condition that either inspection be done. Uh, prior to placing the uh the gravel material, or we receive a. Uh, some sort of letter or notice from the engineer for the applicant. Who would have conducted that type of inspection, either way would be fine.
Alright, um, yeah, I I want to include a condition then, that uh. The disgruntled access drive that the uh material be approved by um. By our inspection services, uh. We'll go ahead and move on to ten point three eight seven. The proposal provides convenient and safe vehicular and pedestrian movement within the site and in relation to integration streets, property and improvements. Uh, the special permitting granting authority deems the proposal likely to have significant adverse impact on traffic patterns. It shall be permitted to require a traffic impact report and the proposed shall comply with sections eleven point two four three seven, this bylaw. Um, yeah, safe vehicular and pedestrian movement is found on the site, uh, ten point three eight eight. Uh, spine is not applicable and ten point three eight nine. Finding is not applicable as well as ten point three nine zero, ten point three nine one. Uh, also not applicable to this project, we'll move on to ten point three nine two, um. This proposal provides adequate landscape, including the screening of adjacent residential units, providing street trees, landscape islands in the parking lot, um. Non-residential units joined the residential district. Uh, I'm not gonna go through it, I'm gonna go, we've already talked about this here, important is to determine whether adequate landscape, including screening of adjacent residential units is provided. Um, we've talked about this, we've determined that the vegetation that is there provides that, as well as the fence. Uh, screening it from the front of the road, we'll move on to ten point three nine three. Uh, lighting is not proposed, so this is not um applicable to this project, um. Then ten point three nine four, proposal avoids to the extent feasible impact on steep slopes, flood plains. Scenic views, grade changes and wetlands, there are no wetland resources associated with buffer within the hundred feet of the project limit work as we. Determined in the moving of that, uh, ten point three nine five, uh, ten point three nine six, uh, neither are applicable to this project. Ten point three nine seven, removal provides adequate recreational facilities, open space and amenities for the proposed use. Uh, that site sufficient open space is located on the site. And then lastly, we have ten point three nine eight, proposal is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of this bylaw. The goals of the master plan, um, and then I think, yeah, board needs to determine whether proposal meets the applicable zoning bylaw section. Including three point zero, three point three uh four zero point one and ten point three oh, not ten point three eight. And possibly uh seven point nine, have you reviewed seven point nine, uh, Maureen? We talked about that.
Yeah, that was um the waiver request uh regarding the.
Okay.
The access, the gravel, um, access strip uh for under section seven point one oh one.
Alright, and then for for moving to grant the waiver and make findings and include the condition, we want to just have all three of those in a proposal, am I correct about that, Maureen?
Yeah, so uh we do have, um, staff has uh created uh possible conditions for the board's. Approval.
Alright.
This special permit, so if you would like to review those.
Sure, let's go ahead and work through those, uh, shall be built and maintained according to the approved plans, application. Uh, package, any changing shall be reviewed by the building commissioner to determine if. Uh, submission to the zoning board of appeals is necessary, said changes may be reviewed and or approved by the zoning board of appeals in a public meeting. Uh, or if the changes are significantly up, said changes shall require. A formal modification of the permit and or condition. The approved plans include ZBA FY twenty twenty three dash oh five, special permanent application. Uh, the management plan, the easement sketch, the plan set prepared by Central Line Engineering Services dated September twentieth, twenty twenty two. Uh, then we have the title sheet, sheet, site plan, compound plan, equipment plan, details, the details again. And then we have the uh written narrative for sixty five uh Main Street, we have the.
Uh, Dylan, if.
Go ahead.
If you may, I can interrupt you, so uh these were the submissions that you stated at the beginning.
I know, it it feels redundant going through them again.
So you could just say as submitted.
As submitted prior, perfect.
You can save yourself a voice a little bit.
Excellent, alright, so before the issuance of any building permits, the applicant shall obtain all necessary permits from the Amherst Department of Public Works. Uh, tree protection of the two existing maple trees nearest to the proposed cabinet shall be in place prior, concerning construction. In the event that either of these two maple trees nearest to the proposed cabinet are damaged or die as a result of the construction. Under this permit, the applicant shall replace the said tree. Uh, the special permit shall expire within two years of the date that this is filed with the town clerk, unless it has been. Uh, both recorded at the registry of deeds and substantial construction or use has commenced within that two year period of time. And then uh that last condition, uh, if you want to include that in there, Maureen, for condition six here, that um. That uh gravel driveway that we uh.
Be inspected.
Be uh approved by inspection services.
Yep.
Alright.
I'll add that in.
Any other conditions from any other board members? Uh, if not, then I would entertain a motion that we uh. Make the special findings, um. To approve with uh conditions and that we also grant a waiver, um. For the requirements under seven point nine, am I correct about that, Maureen? That's everything we need? Right?
Yep.
Do I have such a motion?
Sir, moved.
Thank you, we have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Alright, motion in a second, um, I'll go ahead and do a roll call vote, uh, chair votes aye, uh, Mr. Meadows?
Aye.
Ms. Parks?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Mr. Gilbert?
Aye.
Alright, motion passes five to zero, special permit is with conditions. Uh, thank you so much for coming on then, folks, uh, good luck, have a great evening.
Thank you much, everyone, I'm like, bye now.
Alright, with that, we'll go ahead and pass it back over to uh Mr. Judge.
Hi Steve, are you talking? You're muted.
Unmute, so um, what I said was that we're moving to the second item, which was ZBA FY twenty twenty three. Um, Redwood Construction Inc. requesting a special permit to modify the previously approved special permit ZBA FY twenty eighteen dash twenty one. For the proposed modifications to conditions one, six, eleven, twelve, nineteen, condition four, twenty one, twenty two, twenty three, twenty five, twenty eight, among possible others. As they relate to the proposed changes to the site plan, site amenities, building plans and management plan under section ten point three three and ten point three eight of the zoning bylaw. Located at Renew Amherst two sixty six East Hadley Road, map sixteen D parcel thirteen. Neighborhood residents are in zoning district, this is continued from our September eighth meeting, um. What I'd like to do is go through the submissions that we have received since that time. Um, and then to um discuss each of, we'll go through the submissions we've seen at that time. Then I'd like to specifically um deal with the response to the requests that we had to the applicant. Run through his responses and then um open it up for additional questions, and then we can continue to look at conditions. Um, before we go back to findings, so. With that is our our plan, let me just run through the the new submissions that we've received since our last meeting. We have an email from Mr. White dated September fifteenth, uh, a list of our requests. Uh, and and his response to the list of our requests dated November eighth, plan set. Um, LC two hundred through two hundred and two dated September fourteenth. Uh, which includes planting snow, uh, snow storage plans, management plan addendum updated September fifteenth. An email from Tyler White, dated September fifteenth, a building plan set prepared by O'Sullivan Architects. Um, the first floor, second floor and third floor and bicycle rack specification sheet. Additional towns staff submissions include a project application report dated September twenty first. ZBA requests from us to on the public hearing follow up. Uh, email exchange between the building inspector, um, Edmund Smith and planner. Maureen Pollock dated between dated between September ninth and September twelfth, which includes six attachments. Email between the police captain Gabriel Tang and planner Pollock dated September nine through September fourteenth, attachments as well to that. Um. Email from, we received today an email from Mr. Mark Satterfield. Uh, we have to note that, as we did before, that the applicant's waiver requests. For plans and missions include lighting site and traffic impact statements. So, um, what I'd like to do, unless there's anybody that has any questions, what I'd like to do is run through. The applicant's response to our request from the last meeting, and so let me, let me start off with you, Mr. White. Um, I'm assuming you're the, you're gonna speak for the um applicant.
That is correct, and um, there's two others who, uh, for my team, uh, will be presenting as well. Rachel Window, looks like she was just promoted, and then um David O'Sullivan should be on there, is he, is he here, Maureen? Yeah, Carlos, um, yet to our engineer was planning on being here, but he had a a medical procedure. Um, and isn't able to make it tonight, so.
Good.
Um, he's, he's.
Okay, so the first request we had was, um. So let's get each of those names down for the record, and then we won't have to interrupt, um, again, so Mr. White, give us your name and address for the record.
Sure, Tyler White, twenty eighty two Michelson Drive, Irvine, California.
Great, and is it Rachel, um, name and address for the record, please?
Hello, my name is Rachel Window, and my address is the same, it's twenty eighty two Michelson Drive.
And Mr. O'Sullivan?
Uh, David O'Sullivan, O'Sullivan Architects, uh, six oh six Main Street Reading Mass.
Great, thank you, so the first request we had was for tenant demographics. Uh, your response is that you're not legally, you're legally prohibited from collecting that information. And so therefore, you are unable to provide us with the requested demographics. What we asked for were how many units had children under age eighteen at the meeting, I think it was, um, one of your team. Suggested that about thirty five percent of the units contained families, which isn't the same as having children, if you have a family of two adults. But that was, the discussion was about uh children, um. That, I'm I'm unaware of any legal impediment to you telling us how many kids are on your property. So, explain that to me.
I can, I can have Rachel weigh in, um, per my discussion, we have a separate property management group, and when I requested this information. Um, that was the response that I received, is that, that they were not able to request information on um. The minors that reside within the complex, Rachel, is there any other information that you can provide? Um, on that issue?
Thank you so much, Tyler, no, there's no other additional information, that is correct, and speaking with our local uh legal counsel, since children are not. Considered to be part of the household and aren't considered in the technical head of household count or occupant count. Um, in the Amherst, um, excuse me, the town laws that I've seen and what the lawyer had seen. We don't have that information, we don't collect minor children information, um, in part of our leasing process, so while we would love to provide it. I just don't simply have that information, um, since we're not permitted to collect it.
Mr. Mora, does that comport with your understanding of Amherst law?
Well, I don't, I don't think it's a matter of Amherst law, it sounds like what we're being told is that the applicant doesn't have that information. Um, I I have no idea, you know, what, what to, um, you know. Uh, suggest at that point, if they're telling us that they don't have that information, I think it's a. Uh, pretty standard typical information available through census collection data. Uh, there's probably other ways to get it, uh, the applicant certainly.
Uh, there's probably other ways to get it. Uh, the applicant certainly could have made an effort to try to get it uh, from the census information uh, or, or uh, school department or something, you know. I think the request here, from what I understand, is that uh, the board had asked for a count of number of units that uh would have school-aged children uh residing there. Uh, that's expected to be a pretty, well, you know, rough estimate of the number of uh minors that are living there. We're not looking for any specific information about uh children, so I, I think it was um, you know, uh, uh I'm not, I wasn't at the earlier meeting, so I'm not sure what the, what the purpose. It seems like it's a, a pretty legitimate request and could be responded to.
And I think, I, if I may respond, I think that the issue is we can provide an estimate, and that was provided last week.
Well, that was a guess, Mr. White. That was, that was a guess. That was brought by somebody who, who doesn't.
Correct, it was, it was, it was an estimate. And, and to get, in, 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 able to, in order to provide the exact data that was requested, um, our council is telling us was in order to provide that exact information that we, we were not able to provide. So we can certainly provide estimates. And um, but exact data is, is what we do not have.
So, Mr. White, what I would like to see, I'd like to know if the estimate by your um, who was the, who was the guy that was on the last week? I want to make sure I get his name right.
Uh, yes, Mario Martinez.
Mario. So if the estimate by Mr. Martinez was wrong, I'd like to know that. So what I would like you to do is talk to your local management people, ask them what their estimate is for the number of households that have children under the age of eighteen, uh, number of units that have children under the age of eighteen. If that's thirty-five percent, that's great. If it's twenty or forty or fifty, it does relate to the, to the changes to the um recreational material, to the amenities that are being provided. That's the reason we're interested in, in the information.
Okay, yeah, we can, we're happy to confirm, confirm that estimate.
Well, but you'll ask, okay. You'll, you'll get that information from onsite people, I would suspect. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay, the second.
Considering that you're going to reach out to your local property management company um, that have an understanding of, you know, um, you know, of this property, the tenants, the amenities that you provide. Um, it is it reasonable to ask for, you know, an actual count, not an estimate? So it's an, you know, a real, real data, a real real factual information than um an estimate.
Rachel, would you mind weighing in?
Yeah, absolutely. I'm actually local, so my office is technically out of the corporate office in California, but I actually live just up the road in New Hampshire, so I can definitely um get that information probably this week for you and with a confident number that I think you guys will feel confident in as well.
So it'd be an accurate number and not an estimate?
You got it. Mm-hmm, absolutely.
Okay, alright, so we're looking for an accurate number on the number of units that have school-aged children under eighteen years of age. Thank you. The second is uh community gardens. Um, we asked to consider keeping one of two proposed community gardens for tenant use. I'm going to get your response to that. Um, and you agreed to, to keep one of two proposed community gardens. You have a site plan that um shows a possible position of that or placement of that community garden. Um, one of the things that I, that I have since discovered is that there are groups that one of the things that you, that your folks said at the meeting was that it, you don't know if it was going to be used and that you, it'd be kind of ridiculous to set aside this community garden and not have it used. And that maybe tenants wouldn't like it, or they wouldn't know about how to using it, how to use it. So one of, we, there are groups around that help people, especially um multifamily developments to um manage, use um community gardens. Uh, would you be willing to work with a group such as Healthy Hampshire, which is a group that I have, I, I've seen on, I've seen their website? Um, help to work with them in trying to formulate a program that not only introduces people with community gardens, but helps them manage it.
Sure, we'd be, we'd be happy to, to reach out and to connect with that group.
So we might, so would you be um, I, I think we might condition, uh, place a condition on the extension of the of the timeframe on your um application to um, require you to, to meet with the um Healthy Hampshire, or to meet with some local agency that does this kind of work.
Sure.
What's the size? Can you tell us what the size of your plot is going to be? It was, I don't remember there being um a size on a number of foot feet, or it's just as a red line. What's the size that you expect it to be? Do you know? Do you have something?
Are you talking, are you talking about the, the individual plots within the community garden or the community garden?
The community garden itself.
Um, I, I don't have that number offhand. Um, that would have been a question for Carlos. I can cer- who's not able to make it, I can certainly um provide that information uh after this meeting.
Okay, size of garden. Number of two, okay. Alright. Any questions from board members on that item, that response? Alright.
Mr. Judge?
Yes, Ms. Marshall.
Yeah, thank you. Um maybe Maureen can correct me if I'm wrong. I think the town of Amherst itself has some community gardens and I maybe it's a sustainability coordinator or somebody in conservation, I think. I mean, I think the town has some expertise in this. I could be wrong.
Um, right, there is. To be honest, um, I wish I knew more information. I know Stephanie Chicorelli, uh, who is our um director of our sustainability uh department, um, does work with the agricultural commission and um does have connections with uh, uh food justice and, and food security uh programs and, and whatnot. But I don't know the particulars of, of uh town staff's involvement with um providing guidance or um on community gardens or uh programming, or how to go about implementing uh community garden. I do know that the town of Amherst does work uh in partner with Healthy Hampshire, or, or, or it was called yeah, Healthy Hampshire. Was that the nonprofit that Steve had mentioned? Um, and so, um, but I can certainly um give Tyler, uh Stephanie Chicorelli's contact information um, to talk to, to see if there's additional resources through the town, but I, I don't have the particular information on that right now.
I think I was heard that, that I heard that the town has even made, recently made, or will make some new community gardens um over near the Fort River School, I think. So there, there, there must be some people in town who know about this.
So there are, there are additional um resources available to the applicant to help manage and encourage the use of community farms, if that's, and gardens, if that's something that the tenants desire. Both town and as well as nonprofits. So that's good to know. Thank you. Any other questions regarding the gardens? Um, the next response was on bicycle racks. You, you agreed to put up eleven bicycle, bicycle racks, an additional eleven bicycle racks. In addition to the two that are already there, so a total of thirteen. And it's, I didn't see the design or the footprint. I know that it was submitted, but I just don't have a copy of it. I might, I might have dropped it or misplaced it. Is it the same as what we saw, what was onsite?
Um, I'm not exactly sure to, to tell you the truth. I can, uh, if you'd like, I can share my screen and provide the spec sheet.
Yep.
Okay. So this image on the right is, is uh from the spec sheet that, that we submitted. And um can, can hold six spikes um per bike rack. Um, if you'd like, I can also go through and show all of the thirteen locations of the bike racks on our, on our plans, if you'd like to see that.
Yes, I would. But before we leave this, uh, are these then on a pad? The metal, is the metal connected to cement pad?
That's my, that's my understanding. There's a small pad that uh the metal is attached to, the racket is attached to. And um, yeah, and because of that, and we'll get to this in a, in a bit, but our our, our lot coverage was increased slightly in order to, to take into account.
That, that's right. Okay, so show us the um, the locations.
Sure. So as mentioned, there's um, we initially submitted plans for two bike racks in our plans. Uh, but of, we'll, we'll go ahead and add eleven additional ones for, for total of thirteen. And we can start on the northern portion of the site. Um, this uh symbol is the bike rack symbol, so there's
Oh.
There's generally one per, per building. Uh, one right there.
Alright, is that two racks? Why are there two lines? Is it?
It's just a symbol, I think.
It's just.
There's not two bike racks there. It's just a symbol you use.
That's just, that's just.
Thank you.
No problem. One right there. Two, yeah, I guess I can get my pointer to point it out. Two. Three.
You know, I did see this on the drawings and I didn't know what those were, because it wasn't, it was, the, the key wasn't, it wasn't identified in the key. Okay.
Here's number four. Five. Six. Seven. Eight. Nine. Ten. Eleven. Twelve and thirteen.
Got it. Okay, so essentially every building has at least one.
Correct, and there's some buildings that are essentially attached to each other where we've provided uh additional ones close together to be able to, to, to handle the amount of bikes there, but um, based off of, you know, the um these bike racks were, were providing, believe that that will be sufficient to handle. Um, I guess to mitigate the problem that was observed onsite when there's bikes left um on the ground.
Right. Any questions from board members about bike racks? Alright, the next request was to show the location uh to add picnic tables and trash recycling bins by the grill stations. Can you, and you have um responded that you've added one additional picnic table and two sets of trash bins. Can you show us that?
Correct, here's, here's the screenshot from the updated plans. Uh, down here on the bottom left is the picnic table, um, and right adjacent are the, the trash cans. Uh, we've also added another set of trash cans up here to the north of, of the playground.
So how many trash cans, how many picnic tables? Are, are added.
We, we added one for, for a total of three. Three, one, two, and three.
Okay.
And now there, um, we added, we added the two sets of trash cans, which were not included in our previous plans.
Are there questions, concerns about trash cans and the picnic tables? If not, next question was regarding um I think it's snow, if I'm correct?
That's correct.
Snow storage, yep. I'm disappointed that Carlos is not here. I had some questions that may come from that. Um, so you're proposing to first of all, your management plan says you're going to try to take the snow off-site. Is that correct?
Uh, yes.
Okay, and so when you can't, until you can take it off-site, or if you can't take it off-site, um, you're going to, you're going to store it along the tree line and then next to the egg, the curb cut. Is that correct?
So let me pull up our snow uh storage plans. So we went and had an updated, uh, per their quest of the board, we updated our plans to show s- uh, s- snow storage locations until it can be taken off-site. Uh, as you can tell here, um that this uh planning on storing the snow um um around this, this parking area right here, north of the new building. Uh, and then also around the, the park, the, the new parking lot south of the, the new building as well. Um, and forgive me, as a Californian, snow is pretty, pretty foreign to me, so I can't, I don't have all the technical details on snow storage and um, and, and Carlos can, if there's any other questions that that I might not be able to provide, or Rachel might not be able to provide, um, we can certainly check in with Carlos to get any of these questions answered.
My, my first question is, and I, I don't have the answer to this, but as a Minnesotan, and we tried not to store the snow, especially if snow was going to be around for a while, and especially if it contained chemicals around the trees. Um, it wasn't something that, ironclad rule, but it was something you always tried to avoid. And we always, we did try to avoid having it um near exits and entries of parking lots because of you wanted, didn't want it to get so high that it obstructed traffic. I mean, that is already taken care of by other, the traffic obstruction is taken care of by other conditions, but I wouldn't, I would wonder if Carlos would, how he would um respond to a question of whether this is um, it would damage the trees, if that's an appropriate place to store the, the smell.
And, and uh, we're happy to, to make any modifications to this snow storage plan that the board sees fit in order to have a more uh efficient and safe snow removal, the storage plan.
And if I may, this is, this is Rachel again. I apologize. I am a New Englander and I do the snow removal contracts for our entire New England portfolio. We do not utilize any harmful chemicals such as calcium chloride. We always utilize a landscape safe um, salt plus a combination of sand um that our uh landscapers recommend as well. Um, so if that's something that you would like to see, you know, documentation of, or have a say, and of course, the quantities, you know, involved in that, we'd be more than happy to uh provide that as well.
Rachel, do you pile it up by trees?
Uh, at this site, no, it's, it's actually more difficult, in my opinion, to pile up here. We've done a lot of relocation off-site. Once we receive a threshold inch above roughly twenty inches, give or take, over um an accumulative period of about a week. Which honestly hasn't happened since we've owned the site, um, due to, you know, a number of factors in the world, like global warming, so we haven't had as much snow. But we have plans in place at all of our sites to do relocation off of the community.
Okay, so you relocate after, you relocate after an inch. That's what you're telling me.
So we have a one-inch trigger. We have a one-inch trigger, and then we uh push the snow, and then once we get a cumulative accumulation of over thirty inches in a one-week period is when we would do any type of removal away from the property.
That's a lot. That's a lot of snow.
And we found that uh the. Yeah, but we also are piling up in the trees. We haven't had to do that at this site. I've, again, been to the site very, very numerous amounts of times, especially when there's been snow incidents um or snowfall events that have occurred. Um, and we've pushed against the grass on, you know, it's, it's kind of hard to describe, but we've pushed more against grass um and, and kind of compounded on top of kind of a hill, um, more so than hitting any tree lines. But again, if, if a contingency is that we don't do that and we just do removal, that's an option we can do with our snow removal provider as well. We can easily change our contract to reflect that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Rachel.
You're welcome. No problem.
Are there any questions from members about snow removal?
I have, I have one. I'm just curious about.
Ms. Marshall.
I'm sorry, yes. I'm curious about the, and maybe Mr. Judge will answer this. The concern about the trees, is it that they may be damaged by the heavy equipment that's pushing the snow and then trying to grab it?
More the chemicals, more the chemicals. That was my initial concern. Also, just if it stays there, I mean, snow, snow does pile up, that's what happened. Yeah, well, yeah, it, that is more the. Yeah, it that is more the chemicals and and also potential equipment if it's, if the operators aren't careful. But I, yeah. But we could also, if trees are damaged by the snow removal. There is a way to require that they be replaced, so that can be also another consideration as well. Other questions regarding snow?
Uh, this is Rachel again, I apologize, and we also have a contingency in all of our contracts. That any damage to property or landscaping has to be resolved and repaired by the snow removal company um at the end of each season.
Okay, thank you. All right, lot coverage is the next question, and it seems that um. You're going to need to go up a a one quarter of one percent from where. Uh, you were because of the principally because of the cement pads for the for the bike rack and the. Um, picnic tables. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, I think that's a direct result of. The concerns that we've expressed in your response for them. I'm not bothered by one quarter of one percent increase. For the site coverage, although it is. It is, you know, it's non-conforming, but um it's it's above that. The next response was on affordable units. You had proposed four affordable two-bedroom units. Uh, five affordable two-bedroom units and one affordable three-bedroom units. We asked you to consider to, they have four and two, two affordable one, three-bedroom units. Your response is that you would prefer to stay with five and one. Um, we also went to our. Just our planning department to look at the. The um market in the area as to what's needed. Uh, between two and three-bedroom units. And Nate Malloy is is one of the, our housing experts and works with their Affordable Housing Trust. And does a lot of work in housing. Um, submitted a. An an assessment of to the board. His recommendation is that he is comfortable with five and one. Um, not four and two. Um, if you have that information, um, board members, have you reviewed that? Piece by Nate. Where he talks through the, but there, there's tremendous needs for rental housing, both two and three-bedroom rental housing. And there's not enough in town. And he's comfortable to that, and I, and my inclination had been to. Think that the three-bedroom u- units were in such uh need that we should require that. But it's his belief that. The need is for both four and both for two-bedroom and for three-bedroom and. And the need for five, three-bed, five two-bedrooms would be uh sufficient. For our needs in town.
Um, Mr. Judge?
Yes.
No, he couldn't make tonight's meeting, but. Um. He, I just wanted to point out, he um also indicated in his. Email to the, to the ZBA that. Um. Since um. The the um, there are more than twenty-one units posed in the forty-seven unit building. Uh, a minimum of twelve percent of the total unit count. Um, there's two asterisks. Where it says when six, uh, and and this is under section fifteen point eleven of the zoning bylaw. When six or more affordable rental units are required under this bylaw. Twenty percent of the affordable units shall be affordable to. Households earning sixty percent area median in- income AMI or less. As calculated by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Or any successor uh agency. And so because of that language right there that I cited from the bylaw, there needs to be uh one of the total six affordable units. Needs to be affordable to a household earning sixty percent AMI or less. Um, for our Springfield metropolitan area. Um, and then the five other units would be at a um, at eighty percent AMI. So the board uh would should um place a condition that specifies that um, or or that's what the planning department recommends. Is to include a condition about the sixty percent AMI for the one unit.
Mr. White, are you familiar with that requirement?
Yes.
You're familiar with it, yeah.
Can you repeat that question?
Are you familiar with that requirement and um, are you prepared to? Do that?
Correct, yeah, we're we're prepared to follow uh that condition.
Ms. Marshall, you have your hand up.
Yes, just to note that um, I I think we skipped over the EV charging station.
Oh, thank you very much.
That was right, right after the snow, right? Right after.
Oh, it's right below there. I was thinking that Mr., I would think that Mr. Meadows would have. Waiting for him to say something there. Nope, uh, EV charging station. We asked about um. Consider providing a minimum of one EV charging station on the, on the new parking area, the forty-three space. You'd agree to do that? So.
Would we see the overall sheet? I'm sorry to interrupt you. Could we see the overall sheet?
So. The the proposed location for the EV charging station. Uh, would be uh in this parking lot south of the new building. Um, right, oops. Not cooperating with me, but kind of on this this southern portion right here of of the parking lot. Um, and the reason uh. Uh, behind that location has to do with. The. You know, for my discussion with Carlos is that. This is one of the only areas of the parking lot that has. Um, one that is. Closer to the building, but also has some green space behind it to allow for installation of the of the charging station. Um, and so that was the the thinking there. Uh, behind its location.
Mr. Meadows, you would ra- raise this issue um. Regarding this, is this something that you're? Well, Mr. Meadows isn't serving on this panel, I guess, so I'm, I I know he's raised this in the past. Um. Ms. Marshall.
Yeah, I think. When we talked about this two weeks ago, were we not looking at the north parking lot? And. If if, I mean, it's fine to put it in this lot, but.
Uh, another, i- if I may, um. One of the reasons too that we placed it here is its location proximate to. Um, the the transformer or the electrical source. Um, based off my understanding. This location um was such that. It was, it was. Close enough to the electrical source that made it, I guess, more uh financially practical. To locate it here rather than in a different location.
Okay, so there is just, there is just one, and now it's here.
Correct.
Got it, thank you.
All right, we've dealt with lot coverage, we've dealt with the form, affordable units. We have. That's just a mission. Yes.
Uh, I I had a a a question uh regarding the EV charging station. Uh, I believe. Um, and Mr. Mora can certainly um. Probably speak better to this, but um, I I believe there is a state regulation that may require that there is a five-foot. Isle next to the EV charging station. And if that is the case, uh, would, you know, would the site plan need to be updated uh to reflect that? And um. As that may, you know, have a s- a minor domino effect of. Of affecting how many parking spaces are provided total. But perhaps not, that would prove or disprove whether maybe a a parking space would be lost or. Or m- maybe there would be no change in in the number of parking spaces.
Go ahead.
Um, I, we do have this small, you know, we would have to go, I I can go back and check with Carlos on. On the relevant codes here with EV charging stations. In an aisle proximate to the to the station. I know we do have this little. Uh, path right here. Um, right next to the proposed station that. Could be an option to locate that aisle. Although that's something that I would need to confer with Carlos on.
All right. Um, is there a way to um, Maureen, does that satisfy your your concern, or should we? Have something, do we have to have a condition that says the? Plans have to be modified to reflect any state requirements for a five-foot. I mean, they'd have to. The plans would have to reflect the state law requirements for the EV station anyway, I would think, so I don't know that we need another. Condition to do that. But if we do, um, please let me know and we'll.
You know, I believe we included a possible condition that gets into um. If any sort of um minor changes. Uh, need to be um provided in the parking area due to the. Uh, the layout of the EV charging station that that could be done administratively, so perhaps that that handles this. Topic.
Okay. Ms. Marshall.
Okay, I don't understand what is meant by five-foot aisles. Can you just briefly explain?
Yeah, so you know, a good visual would be for um an ADA parking space. Um. You typically see like um. The parking space next to where the driver opens the door, there's a sort of buffer, there's not a parking space, there's a buffer. Um, so picture that, but it's it's not an ADA space, it would be the. EV charging station and then next to it, there would be um. Uh, room for, uh, there would be the parking space and then the uh the aisle would be a buffer. Um, to provide for the user of the. Charging station. I I I was just made aware of a a possible regulation on this.
You mean to walk, to to bring the. Cord to the, to plug it in?
I believe so, but.
You wouldn't know which side of the car, I mean, wow, anyway. Okay, thank you.
But if there's, but if there is a state regulation that requires it, you'd have to have this, right, you would have to comply with it and it have to be reflected in the drawings. So, um, if. I think we, I don't think we need to address this specifically. Unless you d- determine something else, Ms. Pollock.
Um, Mr. Mora has raised his hand.
Yes, Mr. Mora.
Y- yes, so what we're, what we're trying to do here is make sure that there's universal access to the charging station, so. The accessibility laws that we enforce uh through the building code. Will require that one, if there's only one, the charging station have access to it. Uh, so it's very similar to a accessible, handicapped accessible parking space that you see striped. It doesn't need to be striped in the same way, it doesn't receive the signage. And it is an uh, you know, restricted parking to somebody with a placard. But it meets all the clearance and space requirements so that somebody with the need to access through the aisle. Uh, has the ability to do that and and not have to, you know, work between really tight-fitting car spaces. To get access to the charging station. Uh, the the code doesn't go further to to um designate which side it's on. Uh, you know, it doesn't do that for the accessible spaces either, you know, whether you drive in or back in. Uh, isn't addressed in in the code as long as it's there and available to be used. Uh, reasonably, you know, properly, safely, and and accessed by all users. Uh, you'll often see in larger parking areas that. Uh, the EV charging station will be placed right adjacent to a access aisle that's also serving an accessible space on the opposite side, so it gets a dual purpose. Uh, and and it saves a little space. That can't happen here and doesn't often happen when there's only one. Or so few accessible parking spaces, so I think the issue here is just for knowledge that. Either the parking layout will change, a space count might be reduced, or there'll be a little bit more uh. Hard surface created so that the aisle can be placed next to this uh, this parking area.
Thank you. The last item uh deals with um. Police reports um and activities and the amount of time and amount of, the number of times police have been called to. The um, the property. So. When you presented the last uh two weeks ago. Um, you accurately said we had no, we found no. Police reports of any um on our, or any of anything at the site during the time you owned it. And have managed it. And that was accurate, because the police, we've since learned, the police have. Stopped publishing their lists uh in two thousand nineteen. So you you couldn't go to the website and find it. But we asked them, what I specifically asked at that time, uh, I think it was um. Your colleague. Who responded that I had a hard time believing that in eighteen months you hadn't had any. Any kind of um need. Or any disturbances or any kind of need to call the police or haven't had, or if you hadn't called the police, if that was indeed the case, how did you handle things? In your um internally to your management company. Subsequent to that, and he responded that, no, we hadn't had any police, we haven't had any way, we haven't had any, any um. Difficulties with, he called them nefarious characters, didn't have any nefarious characters on property. Subsequently, we talked to the police and asked them to list for us the um. Calls that they and their activity at the site. And so I looked at that and I took the calls that they had made. From, I used April first, twenty twenty-one. And forward, and in that time period, in that time period, from April of twenty twenty-one, when you took over management. There were over um two hundred calls of the police to this site. Over two hundred calls of police to the site. They went, some of these are are just drive-bys and they see something and they report it. Some of these are serious. They gave a list of the kinds of of calls that they have had. They range from, the most common is. Uh, medical emergencies, but there's breaking and entering, there's breaking and entering, um, and vehicle theft, there's assisting businesses. There's two rapes, only one during your time, there's, I mean, a call about a rape, there's robberies. Um, and there's a. A sec- security checks, which I'm not really sure what it is. Um, but those. Numbers are vastly different than what was represented to us at the last meeting, at the last meeting, and. I'm troubled by that, Mr. White. Um, I'm very troubled by that, because. We as citizens, we try to, we do our best to try to. Um, make our judgments based on the assurance or the assumption. That you are providing, the applicant is providing us with their best possible information. And it seems to me that you did not, in preparation, your firm, in preparation for this meeting. Did not take the time to talk to the local people, the local management about. Police uh presence and police activity in that development. And as a result, we were given the impression that you had managed it with no police presence for the last eighteen months. There's at least two hundred calls, there's over two hundred calls in that, that's, you know, that's ten a month. That's one, more than one a week. Now, a couple of possibilities here, they all took place when you didn't have people on site. It took place at night, and it took place on Sunday when you didn't have people around. Or you just didn't, or it just wasn't checked by your, by your staff to get the local knowledge that we need. So um, I'd like to know. I'm, I'm not inclined, I'm not like to know, I'm not inclined to deal with the um, your request. To remove the condition that there'd be a security officer on site. I think that it's um. This level of of. Police presence indicates that there is a value to having police, having a security guard there. And in talking to the police, they have found in other cases that indeed it does. Um, improve. The conditions of the of the project, of the of the residents, uh, when there is. Private security during the most um, uh, the most likely times for there to be disturbances. But. So I would like your response about um, if, to that concern that I have, number one, about. Not talking to the the local people and getting the local information from your management company, and two, whether you. Um, your thoughts on? The requirement to have. A security company for the year to fi- find out what it's like and to report back to us. After a year when you have a security com- private security company on property.
Sure. So, l- let me address your first, your first question. Um. So. In in preparation for our public hearing. uh two weeks ago and for the public hearing today, we were in consultation with our local property management group and Rachel um in a minute can can share her thoughts on this as well. Um, but that is, that is what was was represented to us from local property management is that based off their records that their uh, the incidents that did happen were not ones that were such that nefarious actors needed to be needed to be that that police presence needed to, was needed onsite in order to to help mitigate some of these nefarious actors. Um, that was, that was what was was told to us from property management. Um, and in a minute, I, we can kind of go through the the police data to show um what actually did happen. You're correct, there were and you were a little bit more generous. You started April first, twenty twenty one. Um, I I counted from March tenth, which is the day after we closed on the property. There were two hundred and twenty seven calls um from March tenth, twenty twenty one until when this data was pulled, I think, um, February fourteenth or so, excuse me, September fourteenth, I'm sorry. So about eighteen eighteen months worth of time. Twenty-three or ten percent of those calls were security checks and per discussion with the police department, those were um, um, regular monitoring checks, I guess, patrol checks that were done by the local police department as part of their normal patrols and they would log those. That's ten percent of those calls. The the other ninety percent were not initiated by police. But were based off calls from onsite or calls from um, a third party to assist. And I wanted to highlight the 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 cases that um or the reasons the police were called out of the, out of those two hundred and four calls over the last eighteen months to dig into the data and figure out what exactly were the police called to do. Uh, because the big picture here is whether or not a security guard, a weekend security guard would help to mitigate um these calls. And so uh what I have on the screen is a graph of all of those two, the, all of two hundred and twenty seven calls. But the ones that were uh where there's ten or more calls, I've listed out in red uh below. So twenty-two assist business, business slash agency. Um, based off my discussions with the police department, those calls are for if a third-party agency calls in for help uh such as um the fire department or a different agency that that needs police help onsite, the police respond to that. So that's not necessarily a call from um a resident onsite or someone that is, that is is calling from onsite to need police help. But that's really a call in from another agency.
That needs help. Okay, calling from another agency that needs police help.
Correct. Um, the next one, which is the highest reason for calls, was emergency medical service. So obviously if uh someone had a medical issue, you know, as is common all around the United States is that police typically accompany um or oftentimes will accompany some of these emergency medical service calls. Um, so that's thirty-five. Twenty is follow-up. So if there was a previous issue where they're on site before, then the police wanted to check up on that issue, they would come back and and address the situation. Uh, twenty-three noise complaints. Um, nineteen security checks, which is, as mentioned before, just the normal patrols. Nineteen still alarms. Um, and eleven suspicious, um, I guess, uh suspicious persons. So I think from in, from our, our, our standpoint, yes, there were a lot of calls, two hundred and twenty-seven. Uh, but when you break it down, um, most of these calls, in our opinion, and this is our opinion, uh, would not have been mitigated by a weekend security guard. And so, um, that's kind of my response to the to the first question. Also let Rachel weigh in kind of on um maybe any, I guess, some of the, and what what you pointed out is we represented two weeks ago that, you know, by all accounts, that there really wasn't much police presence needed onsite. Um, I'll turn it over to Rachel to kind of share her thoughts on what it's like on a day-to-day basis there onsite um in terms of security and and any police needs.
Thanks, Tyler. Um, no, definitely agree with everything you just said. Again, I live about depending what traffic, like an hour away. I'm on the site at least once a week, sometimes more. Um, I'm also on the site at night, um, sometimes, just if we're working late on reports, things of that nature. Um, I've never experienced any crime at the community. Um, just so you know, from an internal perspective, our company is required to submit an incident report that goes to our legal and insurance teams every time an incident is reported to our office or we are a part of said incident. Um, again, there's nothing in the lease that requires that tenants report. Anytime they call in a call or anything of that nature, they're not required to. But if we're ever exposed to any type of crime or slip and fall or anything of that nature, we report that internally and that's stored. Um, that data is stored. So when we do have conversations about utilizing security or if it's a need, we can reference back to those reports as well, too. And again, I've been the regional manager since the entire time we have owned this community um and been to the site more times than I can probably count. Um, I can confirm that we've never had any issue with crime at this community.
Thanks, thanks, Rachel. And and Mr. Mr. Judge, our, our, it's not our intention to be misleading um about anything that we've reported. Um, as Rachel mentioned, sometimes there's a disconnect between the, the, the reason or the police and what actually gets reported internally in our systems. Uh, oftentimes, police will respond without onsite staff knowing. And so that takes into account those issues. But uh I guess overall, you know, we want, we're incentivized and we want to provide a safe environment to our tenants. Um, but based off the data that we're looking at, um, we don't feel like the security guard is is going to mitigate some of these issues. Um, now, I'll, I'll also caveat that with, look, crime is going to happen anywhere. And so, um, no matter if you're here in this community or any community um throughout the United States, no matter the demographics, crimes is going to happen. And so yeah, um, I don't think, you know, we're not going to get these calls down to zero. Um, but based off the data, we don't feel like it's going to move the needle in a meaningful way. So that's, that's kind of our um thought process here. And again, we're not trying to be misleading at all. The data is the data and sometimes there's a disconnect between the police data and our internal property management data.
Thank you for your um your view on this. Number one, um, there are a lot of these that I think are are not life and death responses on the part of the police and maybe a security guard would or would not um on the weekends when you don't have, you don't have onsite management, may not make a difference. On some of these other ones, they would. Um, and I just, for example, I think if there's noise complaint, having a security guard to handle that, maybe to put, to not have the police have to come out and handle it ahead of time. If there is a medical emergency, making sure that there's um that the security guard is there to guide the police to where they have to go to be of help. And back to matter is, the police say that they have found that security guards have had a beneficial effect on the, on other um residential developments, you know, in Amherst. Uh, is is informative and I think a uh something that we should inform, that as a board, we should inform ourselves with. I am interested, though, that now you have you do have, you did have data and we, that you have stored and you have reports and all of that wasn't um wasn't delivered to us when we first looked at this. And that continues to trouble me. And I don't think it's a case of, I don't think it's a case of um, we don't understand each other. I think you used your judgment as to, you, you, the firm, use your judgment as to what we think that what you thought was important was what we thought was important. And we really need to have that raw data. That helps us make a decision. And so for that, I'll let the rest of the board deal with it. Have have their own opinion on this, but my opinion is that there's a significant, there's just no way that there wouldn't have been information to your management company that the police had been there two hundred times in the last eighteen months and we represent to us that there's been no problem two weeks ago. That's my bottom line. And I would leave it there, um, see if anybody else has a comment.
This is Ms. Uh, this is Rachel again. I almost said Ms. Window, sorry. I just wanted to make a clarification. When I say we store the reports internally, I meant in a general sense. There is not a single report for this community. I can have our lawyer email it me directly to confirm. Uh, but I just meant generally because I have twenty sites in New England. So that that was more of a generalization. I apologize.
Ms. Marshall.
Yeah, um, so it seems, it seems like it would be desirable, whether there is a security guard or not, desirable for management to know about calls to the police. So, um, I wonder if the management could collect reports from the police on a monthly basis. However, I don't know how much detail they'd be willing to give you, even though you're the landlord's, there might be privacy laws that would mean you, you wouldn't know who who was the the noisy person or causing the disturbance or the fight. So, um, I'm, I'm not sure, um, you know, because you've said you try that you can evict people for bad behavior. So if you don't know who the bad, who's behaving badly, you can't, really can't do anything about it. So that's one thought. But second of all, I, I'd just like more clarity from anybody about how a security guard, how that job, what it would look like in this kind of situation. I mean, it's not a gated community. There's no, you know, somebody who can monitor people going in and out and you know, it's very open. So what would that person be doing? Walking around constantly? I mean, I, I, I just want, I think we need to define some terms or what each person is thinking is meant by security guard and the kinds of services and powers that person would have.
Was that a question for the applicant or for the board to discuss?
So, Mr. White, I'll take that.
Yeah.
You know, I'm not as, I'm, I am not a security guard expert. But I know that, I know two things, Ms. Marshall. The first thing is that the um the police have said that it is a help in reducing problems in other places and they've used it before. Um, and that's the reason that, and and they've seen benefit from it. And I think the reason they see benefit from that is that people are, you do have something, typically will have a security guard move around the the property. If he is aware of noise, is he aware of of a break-in, is he sees strange vehicles around at night? Is there something, that's what, that's what a security guard does. He also makes sure that, you know, at night and during the weekends, when they don't have anybody up on on staff, if there, if a problem does arise, that there's somebody that the residents can report to. If there's a problem that does arrive and they don't have people on staff at nights and on um on Sundays. So that's, there's another function that they have. And it's sometimes it's just having, you know, as part of a whole security package, whether you do lights, whether you do cameras, whether you do security guards, they all add to the the health and and the safety of the area. Now, that's the reason that the, one of the reasons that there was a one-year trial period and a report back to see how valuable it was, was included, is that we just, we didn't know. We'd heard from other people that it had worked. So in, in the past, that was the reason for the um, the one-year trial period. So, um, I can't tell you exactly what the hourly duties are. I can't tell you what the hourly duties of the security guard are, but I can tell you that we think that they would provide additional security and additional information and safety. And we're willing to to take a look at it and see a year's trial. That's what the, the thought was for the board uh last year. Mr. Maxfield.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, yeah, I've, I've done, I've worked as a security guard many years ago and uh your job really isn't to uh, you know, even prevent crime necessarily. Uh, it's really more to prevent nuisances more than anything else. And if we're looking at the, the public comment we've received from Mr. Sederfield, that's really something that security should be handling and there should be a security guard responding to that. That shouldn't be the police getting called for noise at uh an establishment of this size. There should be a security guard where one of their primary responsibilities would be ensuring that there isn't loud noise on the property like that, that would be disturbing neighbors. I mean, even just to make the findings that this is harmonious with the the neighborhood in which it is set. And I, I think there's, I think there is a requirement for a security guard to be there with one of their distinct duties being to enforce uh that there isn't loud noises uh coming from people's cars or the parking lots or those sorts of things. I, I personally would like to see a security guard on this. I think a project of this size certainly warrants one.
Any other comments from board members? Ms. Pollock.
Oh, I just, uh, thank you, Dylan, for mentioning the public comment um submitted. Uh, perhaps we forgot to list that in the
No, I thought I did.
I, I can't recall.
I think I mentioned it, but it's not, it's good, it was good to catch. Yeah. If I didn't mention it, thank you, Dylan.
I also mentioned possibly collecting police reports, you know, so that management knows. I don't know if that's possible or informing.
So one of the things that we do require routinely, Ms. Marshall, is reports on disturbances or um that where management feels that the um activity is could lead to eviction, breaks, likes to lease, those kinds of things. So those reports are already that the tenant that the management has to compile those on an annual basis and has to provide those to the town. So that's not sort of crime reports for, you know, breaking and entering a, or breaking a window in a car. But that's for noise and other kinds of things that would cause um either punishment or eventually evictions that could break the lease. There's some of that reporting already, but there's not police reporting at this time that I know of. And I'm not sure that the police are gathering this information. This was, you know, they had to do this separately and and compile this report for us. Because they don't compile this and publish it anymore. Okay, are there any other questions for Mr. White or Ms. Window or um Mr. O'Sullivan from members of the board? If not, what I think we need to do then is, since we have some new information, we should open it up to the public. We get public comments. But well, I guess before we do that, Mr. White, I want to give you a chance if you want to, to um deal with any of the issues we haven't dealt with before. There's other things you want to say before we open up to public comment. We did have additional submissions, so I think the public comment period is appropriate. But we, that's normally after you've made any kind of presentation. I think we've gone through your, your responses to our requests. I don't know if there's anything else you need to say.
Um, I think I, I, I just wanted to respond to the last conversation uh in comments from uh from the board members about, about the need for a security guard. I think, and I agree with with Mr. Maxfield in terms with his comment about the use of a security guard is more for public nuisance prevention and mitigation. Um, I think that's, you know, our, our Um, I think that's, you know, our, our staff hours are, you know, Monday to Friday, nine to six P M. And, you know, Saturday from ten A M. to five P M. So we do have staff onsite Monday to, to Saturday. Um, at least at some portion of the day. Um, but we, you know, we would be. You know, if the, if the board feels like a security guard is, is necessary. Uh, we'd be willing to agree to a weekend security guard uh with. You know, to cover up that gap of, of timing when there isn't anyone on site. Uh, to prevent some of these issues from happening and mitigating some of these noise complaints. Um, but we would propose, as, as was mentioned before, a review period after the security has been on site. Um, after six months uh to, to gauge whether or not this is something that's been. A benefit to uh, to the property, you know. I think that's something that's reasonable. It is a significant expense that we would have to, to um. Make in order to hire the security guard, and so we would appreciate the availability to do some sort of review. Um, to see if, if that, if, if that security guard is something that needs to continue or not.
Any other, any other comments from your side, Mr. White?
I think that's all I have. Rachel, Rachel, is there anything?
Open up the public comment. If there's anybody from the public that wishes to speak, please raise your hand. Maureen, I don't see that there's any public. Commenters on this matter. Okay. All right. So what I'd like to do is, um, we'd be, last week, we began the pro- yes, Maureen, what were you gonna say?
Uh, Craig Meadows has raised his hand.
Oh, Mr. Meadows.
I, I, I am glad Sarah took up the E V charging line, thank you. Uh, I did look up the regulations, it, it does say that if there are five or fewer. Um, E V char- charging stations per uh site. That um, a site being an address. That uh, there is a handicapped accessible one required. And that handicapped accessible uh charging station shall be sixteen feet wide. Point of. Not certain if that has anything to do with the deliberations you're doing, but since I have not been listening to all of it. But if that's helpful.
Thank you, Mr. Meadows. It goes back to the need for the, the plans to reflect what is required by state law or by state regulation and, and local regulation. Okay, um, which there's no other comments. Uh, what we, last week, we proceeded to um go through a number of the conditions. That uh, we, we, we approved a number of conditions or several that we didn't, we needed more information. Um, I guess that what my, we have two possibilities here for this application and we have another one yet tonight. Uh, two possibilities, we can go through uh the conditions, all the conditions that we hadn't dealt with before. Uh, decide on them and then go and make our determinations and make our findings on this. Project, I suspect that's going to take us the hour to do that. Um, or close to it, and then we would have to um continue the second, probably have to continue the second um. Application we have before us until later on, or we can um. We can decide to wait for the information regarding the. Um, that the applicant is going to give back to us, which is the information on the number of children. Uh, some sto- snow storage information. Um, we can proceed through much of this, spend a half hour on some of the conditions. And come back in a week or in two weeks and finalize it at that time if we, if we wish. But the question, it's kind of up to the board. If you're ready to act on this one, knowing that we may not have enough time to finish up with the Loomis application. That's fine too, we can act on this, or we can wait and wait for more information if we, if the board feels they need it. So I've looked to the, sort of the, the feeling of the board, if where they wanted to go on with this, or whether we should continue this for two weeks. Is there anybody who wishes to continue it for two weeks? And Mr. Chair? Mr. Ma- yep, Mr. Maxfield.
Um, my feeling would probably be, we still need to take public comment on this, if I'm not mistaken, um, so I would probably say. My feeling is, is wait the, the two weeks to get that information and then just move through it on there. Uh, that's, that's me personally.
Yeah. Anybody else?
Can I just say, I think it's in fact three weeks till the next meeting? Yeah.
What's the date on the next meeting, Maureen?
Actually, and I want to make, I believe it would be October the thirteenth and Sarah, who's on this, is impaneled on this case. Uh, may not be available on that particular day as.
Well, I wouldn't say that. I mean, I'm supposed to get back on the eleventh.
Oh, okay.
It's just that I won't have a lot of time to prepare, that's all, but.
But I would say that it seems that we're, you know, making a lot of headway here, so perhaps there wouldn't be a lot of. Um, review on your behalf, Sarah, um, but, you know, so maybe that would be fine, okay.
Yeah, I, I, it doesn't seem like there will be very much new information.
Okay, so listen, what I'd like to do is, I, I think that we um. We have a lot of work left on this in terms of going through findings and we have information we want to get from the applicant. Um, I would move that we continue this. Uh, application to October thirteenth at six o'clock. And at that point, we'll take up the um, the application, the special permit application. We'll do conditions, we'll do findings, we'll review what we get from the um, from the applicant. We may have, uh, we may need to get further information uh regarding the, uh, the police presence and maybe we can get some more information. On what they feel is the value of a security guard and how, what their experience has been in other, other locations and answered some of the questions that. Both were raised by the applicant as well as by other members. Um, so I have a motion to do that, to continue it to the, the thirteenth.
Uh, Mr. Maxfield. Before we make that motion, do we not want to do public comment uh tonight?
Oh, we did, nobody signed up for it. We, yep, we, we call, I think I did call for public comment, didn't I, Maureen? Yep, I did.
Yeah, I believe you did.
But, and nobody commented, yep.
Must have missed that, in that case, I will, I will go ahead and make that motion.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Parks seconds it, is there a discussion on the motion?
Uh, before you um finalize that, uh, does the applicant, uh, you know, um, the applicant, I believe, need, needs to make their request to continue. The public hearing, is, are they agreeable to continue till, I was gonna say March, until October thirteenth? Um, the meeting would start at six via Zoom?
Yes, we can agree to do that.
All right. Any others, any discussion on the motion? This is a roll call vote. The chair votes aye. Ms. Parks?
Aye.
Mr. Maxfield?
Aye.
Mr. Gilbert?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
It's five ayes, no nays, motion carries. Uh, we'll see you guys again in two weeks. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm not impaneled on the next application, so I will.
Thanks for your work today.
All right, so long, everyone.
The next order of business, uh, before we start, it's eight o'clock. We have started a tradition of a three-minute break around eight. Would people like that? Quick bathroom break, quick, yep, all right, be back in three minutes.
All right, I'm back, I'm just gonna have my camera turned off while I eat this soup that I just made.
Totally understandable.
I was just eating peanut M and M's.
Oh, I can, I can see your, your soup, Dylan, and, and you're eating peanut M and M's and I'm drinking water, so. The, the dinner is getting cold, uh, Ms. Parks, Tammy, you have some. The next order of business is Z B A F Y twenty twenty-three dash zero six, Loomis Communities Inc. Request a special permit to modify the previously approved special permit, Z B A F Y nineteen eighty-five dash zero four. Z B A F Y nineteen eighty-eight, eight dash forty-five and Z B A F Y nineteen ninety-eight for the expansion. Of an existing planned residential unit, a purd, with the proposed construction of a, of three building additions. Including a pool pavilion, meeting room, enclosed atrium, and a three-story residential addition. With nine new family, multi-family dwellings in form ending conditions six, nine, and ten. Under Z B A F Y nineteen ninety-eight, under Article seven and Section four point four, ten point three three. And ten point three eight of a zoning bylaw, located in Applewood, one Spencer Drive, map twenty-five A. Parcel forty-three, Outlying Residence District and Purd Overlay Zoning Districts. Members sitting for this panel include myself, Ms. Parks, Mr. Meadows, Mr. Gilbert, and Mr. Maxfield. Um, we conducted a site visit on Tuesday. Was, yeah, was it yesterday, Tuesday, I think it was, um, and we. Met at the site, met with the architect and the management at the site. We uh observed where the new residential building was going to be constructed, how close it was to the sidewalk, how um. Looked at drawings of what the uh exterior would look like and how it would um conform with the extent to which it conforms with the. Existing building. We went to the front to see where the new atrium and Winter Garden. Area is going to be, where it's going to, how it's going to affect a portion of the parking lot and some of the plantings. We walked inside the, the um building to see the, the current um meeting space. Walked out to where the pool pavilion was, was going to be and how that was going to be changed and got a sense for the size and. Um, and have to the, of the, of the uh, the pool building, the pool addition. Um, we had some discussion about the need for an additional meeting space, we had some discussion about. Parking and the number of parking places which are needed on a daily base, which they feel are needed on a daily basis and are utilized on a daily basis. Um, and we had discussions about public transportation and other ways that people uh get around. Without having to use a car uh at Applewood. Um, and without having to use their own car at Applewood. Um, and we looked at the green space around the area. I think that pretty much sums up the. Site visit, I don't know if there's much else we have to report on, uh, I think that's, that's it. Um, so who's gonna, who's gonna present for the applicant? Please identify yourself and I'll give your address for the record.
Great, so my name is Jeff Squire, I'm a principal at the Berkshire Design Group here on behalf of Applewood and Loomis Communities. Um, here with me tonight is Marge Mantoni, the executive, um, the C E O of Applewood. Um, I, I believe Lou is also here and uh Richard Sullivan uh from Big and Wilson is also here tonight. Um, and I believe we also have some representatives from the architects um, uh, that are here as well. So, um, yeah, I can take you through a quick presentation, um, if that would be appropriate at this time.
Helpful. Run us through what your, your build, your plans are, show us the site plans and um, give us, give us an overview, please.
Absolutely. So, um, so yeah, thank you, uh, thank you for, for joining us tonight, um, we are, um. This is a relatively small project in scope of uh the, the entire property. Just to give you a general overview, um, the, the property. Is at the corner of West Bay Road, which runs across the top of the page here and then, and Rambling Road, which um. Is on the right side of the page here, Atkins and that open parcel through development is to the right. Uh, the Eric Carr Museum is directly across the street, uh, Hampshire College, um, on the north side of West Bay Road. Um, the facility consists of a large, a large sort of sprawling building um on the site. There are Spencer, Spencer Drive circulates the, the facility in the back, which is a private drive. It enters and exits onto West Bay Road and also at, at Rambling Road. Um, there's a number of parking lots that are accessed um off of, off of. Off the Spencer Drive that include um number of garages and, and maintenance facilities. Uh, but generally all of the access in and out of uh the property, at least for the residents, is via Spencer Drive. Um, which comes in off the site. Um, off the adjacent roads. The um, again, this was submitted as part of the application package, but these are just a few images of. Some of the areas of the existing site um where work is proposed, so this is that main entrance. Off of Spencer Drive where that loop drive is, um, the loop drive can be seen. Um, sort of down here on the bottom, it, it enters in and around, um. And speaking to the residential addition component is really off the wing of this building here that you can see on the right side of the page, but this is, these are views of that, of where that work will occur. And so I think, and I apologize, I would like to have Marge Mantoni from Applewood sort of introduce the project, Applewood in general, and really what they hope to achieve with this project. I should have done it at the beginning of this, but it was excited to jump in and get on with the conversation. So I'll introduce Marge, please, just to introduce the project in Applewood as an interruption here. So yeah, Marge.
So Mr. Squire and Marge, I do not want to interrupt it even more, but I failed to, because I was excited as well, I guess. We're both excited. I failed to list the submissions. And so I'd like to do that now so that we're not doing it after the, after the presentation. And so we can get it out of the way. So applicant submissions include a special permit application, and two memos regarding the expansion dated August 11th and September 2nd, applicant response to Section 10.38's specific findings, your management plan, lighting cut sheets, a site plan prepared by Berkshire Design Group that includes one, two, three, four, five plans, including illustrative layout and landscape plan, a building plan set which includes two, four, six, eight, 10 renderings, including a bird's eye view, proposed common expansion, et cetera. Then we have staff submissions which include a project application report dated September 19th, ZBA special permit decisions of 1988, 85, 88, 1990, a purd boundary map, a purd aerial map, GIS generated maps of the property, a zoning map, an aerial map, a topography map, and a conservation and trails map. In addition, there was a drawing dated 9/21 from email by Matt Hughes which regards the roof line calculations. I think that's all the submissions that we've received. And I again apologize for interrupting your presentation and Marge for delaying you, but I just have to do that before we go any further.
No, no, that's great. Thank you so much. And I'm gonna be real quick. You guys have already had a very long night. Just on behalf of the Applewood community, really want to thank you for, you know, entertaining our proposal tonight. Just a little background, Applewood is a not-for-profit community who opened its doors in 1991, providing 103 independent living apartments for people over the age of 62. So Applewood has been home to hundreds and maybe even 1,000 people in Amherst over the last 30-plus years. The project that Jeff is gonna go over with you will enable Applewood to continue to not only serve residents of today, but those into the future. And the new amenities will be really welcome additions for the residents. And the new apartments, the nine new apartments that are proposed, will allow, enable us to move some of the people. We take a waiting list for people who want to live at Applewood. There are currently well over 120 parties waiting to live at Applewood. And so nine doesn't seem like a lot, but it's a help. And it will enable us to serve more people now and into the future. So, you know, it's a real great, the amenities are a great opportunity for our residents to gather, to learn, to stay well. And the apartments will enable us to continue to fulfill our not-for-profit mission to serve, to open doors to positive aging. So thank you for seeing us tonight, and I'm gonna stop talking and shift it back to Jeff.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marge. And sorry for that. So yeah, just to get right back to it. Our, the proposal and project consists of three additions throughout the property, all associated with the larger building, larger main building. At the main entrance, there is a new meeting space, new meeting room, and a four-season sort of atrium space as an entryway that includes a covered walkway, really a more inviting entrance to the site and spaces that offer some opportunities for the residents to do some things and attend events that they may not have the opportunity to do. Now, above this portion of the addition, there are three units, or three new residential units that are proposed. The parking lots on the site will mostly be maintained in their existing layout. There are some small modifications to this, to this central loop here, this drop-off to facilitate this addition, which bumps out a little bit into the, into the drive aisle now. We are losing two parking spaces in this location to ensure that we have adequate access and vehicle circulation, much as it is now. But otherwise, there's no other change to the site other than just reconnecting walks and entryways and exits out of the, out of the building into the courtyard. Landscaping will be replaced. There's a, you know, a valuable patio space at this, you know, at the entryway that will be preserved with its southern exposure and offers a nice amenity to the residents. So that will be recreated. So that's one portion of the project. Another is this three-story addition off of this wing of the westernmost portion of the building. So as again, in those images, this is really just to replicate sort of the existing condition, and the architects can speak to this more, but this really just locates a three-story addition that would match the existing facility in what is currently green space now. There are some retaining walls and some landscaping there now that will be replaced in the proposed condition. And then lastly, there's a one-story pool pavilion that occupies what is now a sort of an outdoor patio space in its northern corner of the building. Again, just taking you through some of the site plans and the site requirements, all of the setbacks, lot areas, frontages, most of those are all, you know, either being exceeded or met minimally. There's a number because of the purd overlay district that don't necessarily apply, particularly with building coverage and lot coverage, number of floors. We will speak about a building height a little bit later, I'm sure. The building height now is not going to, the proposed building height is not going to exceed, I'm sorry here, exceed the current building height, and given where it's measured from, it is a pre-existing non-conforming condition, but we can speak to that later. And then lastly, with regards to parking, I'm just gonna back up a sheet. As I mentioned, we are losing two spaces here. And in one of the subsequent memos that was referenced with regards to parking, we are seeking, as part of this application, a waiver from Section 7.9, which for this use requires one space per bedroom. Marge noted there were 103 units. I believe there's 177 bedrooms total. And these include two-bedroom units. They include studios and single-unit apartments. So it's a range of unit sizes in terms of bedroom counts. This would require 195 bedrooms, or 195 beds, I guess, as a result of this requirement, 195 spaces. There are currently 161 spaces available on the site, and these are open space, open parking lot spaces, as well as the garage spaces. There are a number of garage spaces on the, on the site. As you, as we indicated before, there's a number in the western portion of the site that added all up include 161 spaces. We are losing two, as I noted. So there will be 159 total spaces provided on the site. Currently, they have a need for 74 parking spaces at 98% capacity. So of the, of all the units that are there at 98% capacity, there's only about three-quarters, or less than three-quarters of the spaces that are being utilized by residents. There are roughly 29 staff spaces at maximum shift change that would be required. So there's roughly about 100, a little over 100 spaces that are needed at the current moment. There's no spaces that are designated other than accessible spaces. So based on their experience over the years since the facility was built, they haven't, they haven't experienced any parking issues or parking shortages. There is ample parking along Spencer Drive, which is a private drive in the event of, you know, the need for overflow events or parking. But based on, you know, again, their experience, there just isn't a need for, you know, the 200 or so spaces that are required by zoning. So we are seeking a waiver under that section. I think there are no changes to site lighting, to signage, other than just, you know, relocating some of the directional signage that may result of, as a result of this turnaround modification or loop drop-off modifications. But all of that work is gonna be pretty minimal. No new utility work. Site lighting was submitted. There will be some downcast site lighting or wall packs at the various exits and egress, egress locations. Again, the architects can speak to those locations, but those will all be, you know, dark sky compliant and downlit as required. Again, just running through the submission application package, a more detailed plan showing grading and some of the specific site details relative to patios and hardscapes, planting plan, indicating a number of species and plants being relocated and added as part of the project. And again, I think this is an opportunity to turn it over to the architects and that can run through the various building elevations and images. So Matt, I'll talk to you with that. I will turn it over to you, and I can continue to flip through these slides if that works.
Matt, is it Matthew?
Yes.
He said, hold on, Matthew, I need to make you a panelist. Sorry, sorry about that. He's coming over.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes, hi there.
Hi. So please identify yourself for the record.
Yes, Matthew Hughes. Matthew Hughes, address 389 Elliott Street, Newton, Upper Falls.
Thank you. Go ahead.
To walk you through some of the renderings, plans, and elevations. First off, we have the new commons expansion, which consists of a two-story building, approximately 10,500 square feet between the two floors. On the lower, on the entry level, there is a large auditorium slash meeting space, a enclosed winter garden with winter cafe, consisting of a small service warm-up kitchen type space to provide grab-and-go food for residents. That's enclosed in a capped with a skylight and some curtain wall along the entry walkway, covered entry walkway. And then on the upper level, there are three new residential independent living units, ranging in various sizes, and those also connect to the existing upper level as well via an elevated walkway, an enclosed elevated walkway separating the two spaces. And that connects into the existing building. So this is the floor plan with the circulation highlighted in yellow and the lighter color being the existing building, the orange being the proposed. And it shows how the circulation is now entering the new proposed expansion. There's gonna be a covered patio on the lower level, entry level as well, located in the rear with the, one of the apartments located above. And here you can see, correct, yes. And here you can see the general layout of the proposed auditorium, meeting room space that can be divided as needed, ample storage, egress stair, winter garden space as well with the small service kitchen. And above, there's also the three units with three balconies as well, connecting into the existing, existing building.
Okay.
Here is the updated elevation, which we could talk about the average grade plane now if you'd like. We thank you to Maureen and Commissioner Rob for providing some guidance as far as calculating the existing average grade plane relative to the Bay Road and Rambling Road. So we've established those on the elevation and provided two dimensions to both. One to the existing building, noting the midpoint of the sloped roof, and one to the highest point of the proposed midpoint of the sloped roof as well, noting that, as Jeff mentioned, leading into this, that the existing building is out of compliance with the 35 feet, but we are not exceeding that current condition with the proposed new building. So that's noted here for the commons expansion portion.
I've just one question. What's the existing height? What's the far-left number there? I can't read it.
38, seven, and three-quarters.
And the proposed is 38, five and a half. Okay, thank you.
And that's at least from Bay Road. On the other side of the elevation is Rambling, which notes very similarly. Next portion of the project is the three-story apartment tower unit, which consists of six independent living unit apartments, approximately 2,500 square feet per floor, totaling about 7,500. And the objective for us is to create an extension of what their current wing looks like. And so it seems seamless and is to be an extension of what they currently have. So really, from a floor plan perspective, it's very minimal to what we are adding other than pure units with a small extension of corridor to lead and to feed into those two units on each floor. And here on the elevation as well, noting the two average grade planes, and then the proposed as it's relative to both grade planes, noting that we're not exceeding the existing conditions. And lastly is the pool pavilion, which is a one-story located on the lowest level of Applewood as on this side of the building, the grade slopes down to become three stories. It is about 1,200 square feet of an addition with some programmatic and improvements to the interior spaces of the existing building as well to help benefit the owner and the residents. Here is the lower-level floor plan indicating where the proposed addition will be located. And the addition primarily consists of slab-on-grade with a recessed resistance pool, pre-fabricated resistance pool that's just located into place. And it would allow a exercise alternative for residents and provides rehabilitation alternatives as well using the resistance or treadmill accessories. Elevation as well, noting the two average grade planes on both sides and showing that we are well below what the existing building is. And the pool pavilion is also capped by a small skylight as well. And the pool pavilion is also capped by a, uh, small skylight as well. Okay.
So I don't think I have, um, any other, um, any other points to present at this time, but happy to answer any questions or um, entertain any comments that the board may have at this time.
Members of the board, Mr. Meadows. Oh, you're muted, Mr. Meadows.
As, as I mentioned at the site visit, uh, I'd be interested in where you're going to put the EV parking, to meet the requirement. Um, and I did also mention that there's up to fifty thousand dollars per, uh, street address for EV, uh, grants from the Department of, from Mass D E P. Uh, there's a requirement that if you have less, fewer than five, uh, EV stations at a site that one of them has to be designated as handicapped and is sixteen feet wide. Um, do you have any idea where you're going to put that?
Um, I don't immediately just based on, you know, all this information was relatively new. We did get, um, that rebate information passed along, um, to, to Marge in Applewood, um, you know, quickly, so I know that is going to be something they are going to pursue because as noted during the site visit, um, that is something that has been in the capital budget, uh, for Apple for a number of years because of the increased demand for, uh, for EV charging units. So this will certainly, uh, be a catalyst to, uh, um, to, to produce some of those results. So I don't know, you know, we'll, we'll have to do a little bit of research in terms of, um, you know, electrical, um, uh, availability on the site and how that would affect some of the existing parking, but I know it will become part of, um, a part of this plan going forward. So, um, I don't know whether Marge or Lou, anybody else can say anything more about it, but I imagine it will be where, um, you know, where it will be most, certainly most useful to the residents.
Yeah, we, um, you know, tha- and, and thank you, Mr. Meadows, for that information. We were really excited to hear about the, the rebate program and started looking into it right away. So, um, as Jeff said, we, um, got the name of a, of, uh, of an one company at least that, um, I reached out to somebody else in Eastern Mass who had just added an EV station, EV charging station. And, um, so she gave me the name of the contractor that they worked with. Um, but that was yesterday, so, or just this morning she responded. So as soon as we have the information, we can certainly update the plan, but, um, would be, um, definitely, um, looking to do that.
So you'd be, um, you'd be amenable to having a requirement that you, you put in, in your final drawings that you submit to the town of the placement of the EV, um, uh, places, EV, uh, parking spaces, right?
Yes.
Good, okay. We can make sure that that's one of the conditions, Mr. Meadows.
Good, thank you.
Other questions from the board? I had a, I had a question that's not really, um, that, that's not about the outdoor layout, but about the layout of the, of the, uh, pool. How, how big is it? It looks like it's about fifteen by fifteen or something like, like that. It's hard to tell from the, from the floor plan. So it's just really, uh, it's sort of a, it's not a lap pool. It's a swimming and plate, whatever they call those swimming and place pools. With, um, where you, we swim against, uh, a current. Is that what you're talking about here?
Correct, correct. Uh, this model that we've been, uh, pursuing has, uh, two motors, uh, for two quote-unquote lanes, um, in a, in the resistance pool. Um, uh, the pool itself is about sixteen by sixteen feet. And, uh, the, the whole addition itself is, is fairly small.
And so, and you mentioned, it can be used a lot for, uh, rehabilitation and, um, for that popular, for that population, that might be really good. Makes a lot of sense. Any other questions from board members?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, um, I'd like to just maybe raise a point about the parking here. Um, I, you know, I appreciate, yeah, we can hear, you know, kind of walking through, well, actually the architect for that now, walking through the layout of the building. Um, you know, I'm just looking at the numbers here. I understand that, you know, with what's currently provided versus what's required, you know, of course by zoning, by right. Um, I think we're currently at like ninety-one percent of the requirement. We're suggesting that we're going to add units, of course, um, and decrease the parking, um, by, I think it's, uh, two spaces here. So, you know, by my math, that looks like eighty-two percent of the required numbers. Now, normally, I mean, that would be, you know, uh, item of concern, but given, given the use, um, you know, of this as sort of an aging and place facility, I'm a little less concerned. You know, it, it sounds like the current numbers that are provided are adequate. I think the number mentioned was ninety-eight percent utility right now. Um, for resident parking, m- my concern, of course, is if, if we're adding more units to, you know, the existing, um, number here, we're going to, you know, require more parking. So can you explain perhaps how the, uh, excess parking right now is, is being utilized? Is that being utilized primarily by staff of which there's not a requirement for? Or, you know, are, are those sitting vacant?
Then Marge could certainly speak to this better, but I know there are a number of spaces that certainly sit vacant. Um, you know, again, there's, there are no assigned spaces other than the garage spaces. Um, so any of the open-air spaces that aren't taken up by, you know, resident vehicles or by staff, um, just remain vacant. And there are, you know, frequently a number of vacant spaces, you know, throughout the site. Um, I know that, um, yeah, I mean, one of the appeals of this facility is, you know, that they offer tho- both, um, you know, van and car uh, services as part of the, um, of, of part of the, um, functions of the, of the facility in addition to, you know, the PVTA stop across the street. So there are a number of residents that, you know, don't even, um, need vehicles just because they, you know, they can depend on, uh, the, the transportation that's provided there. So, um, there, there are frequently a, a, a number of vacant spaces there in the nine additional units. Um, you know, w- we don't or they don't anticipate that there'll be a huge change in the demand for vehicles, resident vehicles anyway. Um, the project is adding one, um, I think either full or part-time staff. Um, but that's, but that's it. It's, you know, the staffing, um, the staffing need upgrades with this proposal are minimal. Um, it's really just the nine additional, uh, residential units, which again, it, you know, in ninety-eight percent capacity, um, you know, they're at less than three quarters, um, you know, um, three quarters full for, uh, you know, for, for vehicles associated with those, with those individual units.
You covered it well, Jeff, thank you.
Uh, yeah, thanks for that overview. Um, you know, maybe just a follow-up question. Has there ever been historically any issue with, um, you know, parking needs on-site not being met by, by what's provided? Of course, you know, right now it sounds like it's not an issue, but historically.
Yeah, I don't think so. And, and so, and just to point out too, that there's an arboretum across the street that, you know, is frequented by the public. Um, and so Spencer, it's not uncommon for Spencer Drive to serve as overflow parking. It's, it's a full twenty-four, twenty-six foot wide roadway. Um, so there's more than ample space for on-street parking all along Spencer Drive where possible. Um, in those, you know, in those events where, you know, there happened to be, uh, uh, you know, a need for overflow parking, but, um, you know, my understanding is that those are, are, are rare and far between.
Correct.
But there are, there is room on-site and, you know, and all this service space down here also could function as overflow parking if it really comes down to it. But I just, I don't think there's been a, a, a demand for that or a need for that, um, that they've seen.
Thanks for the explanation. I'm not sure if anyone else, you know, on the board has any comments or, or questions about that, but that, you know, sort of satisfied to me. Just wanted to use that point since, you know, we're substantially under, but at the same time, it, it does seem as though, um, you know, it's kind of, uh, accommodated based on, based on usage of the.
Ms. Parks?
I was just going to say, the, um, the new meeting, um, space, will that be open to the public? Um, in other words, I'm thinking of if there's an event there, then where would parking occur?
We, we don't have any plans at this point for it to be just open to the public, um, but we could invite groups in for, you know, for, for, if there was a meeting. I mean, we do, we currently host, um, you know, um, you know, continuous learning programs and things of that nature. And, and even with that, we don't have any, any issue with the parking and so forth, because as Jeff pointed out, um, you know, if we needed it, people can park along Spencer Drive. Um, so we don't expect to have, you know, at this point, our plan is not to have, you know, um, you know, graduations or, or, you know, large functions in, in the, um, in the space. It, it's primarily set to be used for residents, um, and then guests or, or, you know, some people, but it's not, it's not going to be rented out space, so to speak, for a recital or something of that nature.
Okay, yeah, I was thinking more of like the League of Women Voters or something like that, if a group wanted to, uh, meet in that space.
And, and we currently do offer those opportunities and have not run into any parking issues.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions from the board? I guess I would, uh, the only question I have really is, um, is perhaps Mr. Moore can help. It looks to me like the roof line is, um, while it's above the zoning bylaw limit of thirty-five feet, it is below or almost the same, if not a little bit below the existing conditions and existing non-conforming roof line. And Mr. Moore, can you? Is, is that correct? I mean, from a visual standpoint, it looks to me like it meshes well and it doesn't create a, um, a different roof line or a higher roof line. It looks like it, it fits in with the, the, um, property, the existing property and the existing architecture very well. Um, but is it correct that it's, it is no higher than the existing line and we, we really are looking at is extension of an, uh, extension of an existing non-conforming pre-existing condition for this new roof line?
Uh, yes, that's, that's exactly correct. So the, the existing non-conforming, uh, roof line exists. Uh, it's been there for, uh, a long enough time to gain that status. Uh, the zoning bylaw allows the board to consider extending that, uh, uh, to a height that's beyond what the, the current bylaw has for a height limitation, but, uh, not any greater than what's there as an existing condition. And that's done under section nine point two-two. So that would be a finding that the board could make to support, uh, that addition.
Thank you. Other questions from members of the board? Um, if not, and, and if there's no other presentation or information that the applicant wants to relate to the board, I'd open it up for public comment. Maureen, do we have anybody from the, uh, the public that wishes to speak? And if you're a member of the public who wishes to speak on this matter, please raise your, use the raise hand function of Zoom to indicate to us that you wish to speak.
I'm not seeing any raised hands.
I always give it just a little bit of time for people to find that raise hand function, but it looks like we don't have any anybody seeking recognition. All right. If we don't have any, um, public comment, one last chance for the applicant to make any last statements before we move into the, um, meeting phase. We keep the, the hearing open in case we need to solicit additional information, but we move into the meeting phase to allow us to consider, um, both the findings we have to make, but first to consider the conditions that we'd want to impose on the, um, on the application in order to be able to make the findings that we're required to make under the zoning bylaw.
Yeah, so the, on behalf of the applicant, I don't think we have any other further presentation material.
All right, then barring any interest on the part of board members to speak further, let's start looking at conditions. Um, if we turn to page, I guess seventeen of the project application report. Uh, the first condition is pretty much, uh, standard, project usually should be built and maintained according to approved plans. This is our standard language. The approved plans, including X, Y, Z, Maureen, we will of course have the most, the approved plans will be the most recently submitted plans and they'll be up to date, correct?
Correct.
X, Y, Z is, yeah, you'll figure that out. All rooms be labeled on the following approved floor plans. Again, we'll find these floor plans, I think either the ones that have been submitted or a more recent one, without any substantial change from what we've seen submitted. The approved management plan shall be followed by the applicant. The building shall be two and a half stories height and heights measured as shown in the approved plan, finish rate is the highest point.
I'm such.
Yes.
Chair, uh, I guess I would want to clarify those three additions, um, of how many stories, um, shall be. So I guess there's a variety. Do you have the pool pavilion? Uh, which is one story, the common expansion. Um, I don't know, um, if that would be considered two and a half or three, and then the apartment tower.
Well, how do we represent that in a condition? Do we just, are we satisfied that the drawings that they have provided? Satisfied, give us this and then we just reference those drawings and elevations that we've been provided?
Yeah, or we could, uh, do sort of within this possible condition, uh, for, um, we could state, um, you know, the common expansion shall be this amount of stories, the pool pavilion shall be one story and the tower shall be three. Uh, I just, I, I, I can't recall at this exact moment what those particular buil- building additions are.
So I'm comfortable, I'm comfortable giving you and Rob the flexibility to reflect what we saw in the drawings, uh, today to, to, um, identify the, the height of those, of a str- number of stories of those buildings. So why don't we do, why don't we leave it at that unless there's objection from anybody? Um, any changes to the management plan and complaint response plan shall return to the zoning board appeals at a public meeting. Property shall be free of litter and debris. Before the issuance of any building permits, the applicant shall obtain sewer, water, driveway and trench permits from the Amherst Department of Public Works. Building exterior and site improvements, the town engineer shall inspect the construction of entry driveways and onsite paved areas for conformance of town standards. Now we're getting into, um, what are the, some of the more ti- again, the more typical construction work, uh, conditions. All onsite utilities shall be underground. The applicant should provide an ad-built plan to show buildings, locations, grades, accessways, parking ways to the town, building commissioner, the town engineer, and to be placed in a special permit in the planning office within ninety days of receiving certificate of occupancy. All exterior lighting shall be designed and installed. It will be shielded or downcast. Uh, lighting shall be selected according to the dark stack compliance recommendation, the ZDA rules and rights. The building shall meet our local energy efficiency code and regulations of stretch energy code. In addition, low-flow plumbing fixtures shall be installed throughout the project. Temporary certificates of occupancy shall be approved through the building commissioner. The building commissioner may impose certainty requirements to guarantee completion of any work required before issuing a temporary occupancy permit, including for landscaping under the top coat of paving and/or other required items that the building commissioner determines may be, may be provided after a temporary occupant permit issues. may be provided after a temporary occupant permit issues. And the surty provided shall be in appropriate form pursuant to any written surty agreement. With the amount of the surty to be determined following peer review of a punch list provided by the applicant of the work to be secured with the estimated costs and with required surty to be taken into account for the cost to the town, the work, prevailing wage and competitive bidding requirements and the impact of inflation. All utility work and work within the public way should be conducted following the regulations and permits required by the town of Amherst. Digital CAD, CAD plans shall be required for final built, as-built plans for DPW. These plans shall protect all property lines, pins, easements and utilities. The utility information shall include rims, inverts, pipes, sides, slopes, all water valves, shut offs, water service, service locations and all cleanout locations. The following construction permits and current associated fees shall be required by the DPW prior to the start of construction. Trent permit, sewer entrance permit and a water system entrance permit and all other permits that may be required. Final certificate of occupancy should not be issued for any building or any unit until the final to- top coat of paving for all driveway and access areas, sidewalks and berms has been completed. Landscape as shown on the plan of record, on the plan of record has been installed and the complete as-built plans have been submitted to the building commissioner and town engineer by all design professionals for the site and the building construction approved by the building commissioner and town engineer. Parking and access, parking shall occur on approved services only. The parking area shall be maintained as needed. The parking and driveway areas should be constructed in accordance with your current of article seven point one. The one hundred and fifty-nine onsite parking spaces shall be constructed and maintained by the applicant. That's the right number, correct? One fifty-nine? Okay. The parking management plan should be followed at all times and any changes to parking management plan shall be reviewed and approved by the zoning board commissioners at a public meeting. Landscaping and signage, landscaping shall be maintained by the property owners in accordance with the management plan. Pro- uh, plantings that die have to be replaced. This is a typical, um, requirement, a condition that we place. Applicants shall make reasonable efforts to use natural herbicides and non-toxic chemicals for regularly scheduled treatments of landscaping and advance notice and appropriate warnings to tenants from the public shall be provided regarding the application of toxic treatments to any common area used by tenants of the public. All mature trees found within the area shall, except those to be shown on the approved plans to be removed, shall remain and be maintained to provide visual screening from the adjacent properties. Any existing mature trees within the project that die shall be removed and replaced with a like species with minimum height of ten feet. The applicant shall return to the ZBA at a public meeting for review and approval of the design of any temporary signage and any change to the approved permanent signage. Stormwater and drainage. Prior to the start of any work and the issuance of the building permit, the applicant shall provide the buil- building commissioner with the final stormwater pollution prevention plan to address specific sedimentation, erosion, dust control, which illustrates that a minimum location of measures should be haysocks, silt fence, sedimentation bases and other erosion controls of the plan of record and provide detailed construction sequencing and methods to protect the infiltration capacity of each infiltration system. A list of written procedures that outline a specific operation and maintenance measures for all stormwater drainage facilities, including any temporary facilities and that shall be employed to minimize or eliminate the threat of transmission with mosquito-borne diseases to the residents of the project and nearby residents. Construction. Uh, prior to construction, any building permit, pre-construction meeting shall be scheduled with the applicants and, and, and the town. Uh, two of twenty-one, a written construction safety management plan shall be submitted to the fire chief and the building commissioner prior to the issue of a building permit. Twenty-two, the approved construction logistics plan shall be provided at the pre-construction meeting and shall cover the following items. I don't feel a need to read through each one of those. I think they're all before you and they're pretty, and they're pretty standard. Twenty-three, the approved construction logistics plans shall be subject to the following conditions. There shall be no exterior construction activity, including the fueling of vehicles on the project site before seven and after seven P M. Monday through Saturday. There shall be no construction on the project site on the following legal holidays. New Year's, Memorial, July fourth, Labor, Thanksgiving and Christmas. The applicant agrees that the hours of operations shall be enforceable by the Amherst Police Department and/or inspection services. Parking for contractors shall be restricted at the project site. No parking in idle and construction trucks, equipment in any public right-of-way. Blasting gives twenty-four hours notice. Project sites should be fenced during construction. Members to, uh, measures to control dust and debris, uh, prior to, the plan has to have prior to construction, physical barriers, shall show the physical barriers to be installed in the tree protections of, uh, within the clearing line. Tires shall be washed before they exit the site during construction. Location of every project stormwater disposal area shall be protected to prevent compaction. All cat stations shall be protected from soil debris, no stumps, demolition material or other construction material shall be buried or disposed of on the project site. Twenty-four, as part of the building permit application, the applicant shall provide the building commissioner with the name, address and business number of the project manager. The applicant engineer of record, um, and during the site, uh, and construction phase shall visit the construction site. The special permits shall expire within two years from the date of that it is filed with the town clerk. Unless there has been both, been both recorded at the registry of deeds and substantial construction or, or use that's commenced within a two-year time period. So you've got, you gotta get this done within two years. Okay? And construction shall be completed within twenty-four months. You gotta start within two years with substantial, uh, construction and construction must be completed within twenty-four months from the date of issuance of the building permit. All right? Okay. Now, there's one that we wanted to talk about, which was the, uh, EV, um, the EV site. And we wanted to have that, the EV stations located on the construction plan. So can we add one, I'd like to add one condition to do that, either in the parking, uh, the parking notice condition or independently.
And, and, uh, to clarify, um, how many, um, uh, what's the number of EV charging stations? On, on, in the parking lot would be provided?
What is the requirement? Is there a state requirement for new construction? And for this, it'd be nine units. I guess it's not for the whole hundred and eighty-nine, it'd be for nine units. So.
Uh, this would be a requirement of, uh, a condition of approval.
Right.
So whatever, uh, you, you.
Whatever you want.
Yeah. So, you know, for other projects, you've, um, required one, for example.
Um, has the applicant given thought to the number of EV stations that you're likely to need over the next few years? Or, or given thought to preparing to have enough, um, cable and enough power to get up to EV stations, more than one EV station? What's your thought on that?
Yeah, we, we don't, you know, as Jeff pointed out, we don't really know what the electrical requirements are and so forth. And so is it a piece of cake to do more than one or is it a massive, and we just don't know enough yet? I know that, um, and, and we do have some, we have a resident who already has one in their garage, for example. So obviously there's a capacity to do it. I just have, I hate to say, oh, you know, we can do a couple and then find out we can't.
How, how about if the condition says a minimum of one EV charging station?
Yeah.
So they could do at least one, but if they want to do additional ones.
That's what's hard about EVs. I don't, I, I know that we, it's gonna, we're gonna have a greater need than we, than we currently have. There's gonna be a lot of demand for it, but we don't have a really, we don't have a direction as to how much we ought to be, uh, requiring of new construction and what the cost is yet. It's really something that the, the board has to think about and, and, well, the whole country does. But the board has to think about what we want to do with this. So a minimum of one. And if you're in, in the course of, if that's, doesn't mean that it can't be more than one. And in the course of your exploration of this, you find out that you have, you have the capacity and the interest in doing more, put it on the building plans. And so it's available. Okay?
Sounds great. Yep.
All right. Are there any other conditions that people wish to speak to or, um, before we go on to making our findings? Okay. This is gonna be a little different. I have not done a purd before, um, which is, so this is the first for, uh, while I'm been on the board. Um, so we have to make a number of, of findings for these planned unit, um, residential developments. So if you proceed to page six of the project application report. The first four point four zero, four point four one are descriptions of what's required. Four point, then it describes other things that are required in the purd, uh, in for a, for a planned, what is it? The planned unit residential development. The one we have to consider is four point four two one, which is the, um, density and intensity of land use. And the staff has reviewed it and found that there is sufficient land use and the, the, um, there's, if you look in the, on four point four two one, there's, um, one point six million square feet of land remains. Therefore, the approved thirteen single-family dwelling meets the minimum lot requirement under section four point four two one. Number two is four point four two one one. Again, that's a land question. Um, and there, there, um, it's more than sufficient land that remains. So I think we can find that they meet the requirements for four point two one one. And again, if anybody objects, uh, just speak up. I'm looking at the paper. I'm not looking at the screen. So you have to vocalize your desire to speak. Four point four two one, four point four two one two, um, is dealt with in four point two one three. And that's proposing an expansion of the non-conforming dimensional standards requirements for the maximum density laws for multifamily units under section, uh, four point four two three. I guess I'm confused about that one, Maureen, but it doesn't look like we have to make a decision on that until we get to four point four two one five. Is that correct?
Um.
You can make a finding on anything until four point two one five.
The, um, you do need to make a finding regarding section four point four two one three. Um, as, as, uh, the applicant is, uh, seeking relief under section nine point two-two. Um, so, uh, I guess to give a little background information. So this purd development was originally, uh, approved by the zoning board of appeals under ZBA F Y nineteen eighty-five dash oh four. And, um, the, the governing bo- zoning bylaw at that time, which was from May nineteen eighty-four bylaw, did not permit townhouses or multifamily uses, uh, which are, uh, use, use types that are allowed in a purd. Uh, however, for some reason, the ZBA approved forty-five multifamily units and ninety, um, what was called retirement apartments, which are multifamily units under that nineteen eighty-five special permit. So since that nineteen, nineteen eighty-five special permit approval, the zoning by- bylaw has been updated to allow townhouses and multifamily uses under a purd. The previously, the previous approved uses and number of units have been reclassified as follows. So the, um, there, there's thirty-two townhouses, the thirty, um, thirty-two, uh, townhouses and a hundred and three multifamily units. So under the current zoning bylaw, the additional lot area per family requirement for each of the thirty-two townhouses and a hundred and three multifamily uses, use, yeah, units is twenty thousand square feet. There's no remaining lot, uh, lot area to account for this additional lot area per family requirement under the section. However, it's been deemed that these uses in dimensional standards to be pre-existing non-conforming. So the applicant is not altering or expanding the, uh, the applicant's not altering, expanding that the existing townhouses. Therefore, the board doesn't need to take action on that, but they do need to, yeah, the board does need to take action on the expansion of the non-conforming dimensional standard requirement for the maximum density allowed for the multifamily units as they're, um, increasing that non-conformity with their proposal of nine additional multifamily units. It's a lot to digest, but I hope I, uh, explained that well.
I'm not troubled by the lot coverage for this, the new, and I would find that it's, uh, we have, we'll get to nine point two, nine point two-two in a second. So, um, I think we make the, the finding we have, the next finding we have to make are four point two one five, four point two one six, four point two one seven, and four point two one eight, four point two one seven. These all deal with dimensional regulations and they all deal with the fact that we have a pre-existing, a non-conforming pre-existing condition. Um, and we have a sufficient open space. So, um, I think we can find that they meet the requirements under, um, can find they meet the requirements under four point four one two, one six, one seven, one, and one five. Four point two one eight is percentage of dwelling units of any one type. Uh, it'd be this, because of the, um, dispersion of different, um, building types and unit types. This meets the, it does not exceed the maximum amount allowed and therefore meets section four point four two one eight. Four point four two one nine deals with parking requirements as regulated by article seven. Um, and for this, the proposal, as we know, does not meet the parking space requirements by thirty-six spaces. But, um, we wanna, we, we believe that it does not, uh, we can waive that application, uh, where the, the application of section seven, um, and, and so I guess it's sec- seven point nine, uh, at the later point when we come to the waivers. And so therefore we can find that, um, the applicant, we make the waiver for the parking requirements and, um, the hundred and fifty-nine spaces are deemed to be sufficient for, um, this apple, this project. And that's because of the nature of the, the clients and the residents of the, of the project don't have a lot of cars. And I don't see that changing much in the, in the future. In, in design standards and parking plans. Do we have to do anything else under the, the purd? Are we done with the purd? Okay, good. We won't have another purd for another five years. So we got through that. Okay. All right. Paving, um, under the, the requirements of the, uh, conditions will, a lot will provide for this. On slope, proposal meets the requirement. Setbacks from building, the proposal meets the requirements. Uh, dimensions, markets, market, marking and delineation. Um, there's not proposing any additional parking spaces. Therefore, the selection is, this section is not applicable to this project. Entrance and exit driveways are not changing anything there. So this is not applicable. Landscape standards, um, is not proposing any additional parking spaces. So that's not applicable. Uh, parking on twenty-five or more spaces, um, this, this is not applicable. Uh, screening, existing screening is, 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 uh, sufficient. Article nine, this is the finding we have to make so that we can, um, allow for the, um, continued use of the non-conforming building. Nine point two-two, the special permitting granting authority is authorized to act in the provision of section three point three of this bylaw may, under a special permit, allow a non-conforming use of a building or structure. Land to be changed to a specific use not substantially different in character or its effect on the neighborhood of the property in the vicinity. The one week, the portion we care about of nine point two-two is that authority may also authorize under a special permit, a non-conforming use of a building, structure or land to be extended or a non-conforming building to be structured, altered, enlarged or reconstructed, provided that the authority finds that such alteration, enlargement or reconstruction shall not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming use or non-conforming buildings. I don't, I believe that we can find that this does not provide a, um, a suffi- a substantial more detrimental, um, effect upon the neighborhood than the existing conditions and the existing buildings.
And so that would be as it relates to the, um, all three, um, the expansion of the, um, I guess the density of the multifamily u- units. So they're adding nine more units to that non-conforming building type or housing type. And then the, and then they're expanding the non-conformity of the building heights or the common expansion and then the apartment tower.
Correct. It, it seems to fit in well with the neighborhood. It's not gonna be a, it's not gonna be detrimental, significantly detrimental to the existing, uh, neighborhood. And the, then the existing use. Section ten point three eight findings required. Ten point three eight zero and ten point three eight one. It's, it's, uh, located in a neighborhood which is proposed under the town deeds appropriate. This is located in a purd. It's been located there for a long period of time. Ten point three eight two, three eight three, three eight five, three eight seven. Mostly all deal with different ways in which the, um, property could offend or provide a nuisance to the neighborhood. or provide a nuisance to the neighbors. I don't think this significantly increases that and they do provide dark sky compliant lighting. 10.384, adequate facilities for the proper operation of the proposed use. There's utilities there and with the current use, it's no reason that it isn't adequate for the proposed new use. 10.386, you have to be, the proposal requires in performance with the parking waivers, with the parking and sign regulation, we are, are granting a waiver under section 7.9 for the parking requirements. 10.387, proposed provides convenience, safe vehicular travel, traffic. We find that, that there is safe vehicular and pedestrian traffic on the site. 10.388 deals with adequate space for off-street loading. We find that that is, that is not applicable to this project, it hasn't changed. 10.389, proposal provides adequate methods of disposal and/or storage for sewage, refugio-recyclables. Three building additions will use the existing utility disposal services, which are sufficient. 10.390, the proposal ensures protection from flood hazard, this is not, proposal meets the, the requirements. 10.391, the architectural style of the building does keep with the architectural style of the existing property and there's no unique or important natural historic scene fixtures. 10.392, adequate landscaping clearly makes that finding. 10.393 provides protection for hydration properties, again, from intrusion and nuisance of lighting and, and again, they're going to comply with dark sky compliant lighting, which will not spill over to abiding properties. Proposal avoids the extent feasible impact on steep slopes, there are no wetland resources here and/or associated buffers found within 100 feet of the premises. 10.395 does not create disharmony with respect to the grain use or scale of the architecture of the buildings. And, and with the grounds of budding real cases. The board needs to make a finding on whether the proposal is harmony with the rest of the terrain. We have found that, we've already made a finding regarding the existing roof height and in the area, that it does not significantly differ from that. And the board, I believe the board can find that this is in harmony with the rest of the terrain use and scale of the buildings. 10.396, the proposal provides screening for storage areas, it's already there. 10.397, the proposal provides adequate recreation facilities, there's a lot of open space. 10.398, proposal is in harmony with the general purpose of the intent of the bylaws and the goal of the master plan. I think it isn't, I think this is clearly within the goal of the master plan. Section 4, objective H.3, which encourages opportunity for proper infill development. The boards need to determine whether the proposal meets the applicable zoning sections, including 4.4, yes. Section 9.22, we've done that. 10.33 and 10.38, which we've already done. So as a result, I think we've had the findings that we needed to make, including the findings of 9.22 and the PRRD findings. We've done our 10, we've done our section 7 findings and section 10 findings, 10.38 findings. I'm prepared to consider a motion to approve the application, the special permit with conditions, based on our findings and with conditions. Do I have such a motion?
They're moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, is there any discussion on the motion? So do we state that the motion is that we approve the special permit application based upon the findings we, with the findings we made and based upon the conditions required? The vote requires a roll call vote, the chair votes aye, Ms. Parks?
Aye.
Mr. Maxfield?
Aye.
Mr. Meadows?
Aye.
Mr. Gilder?
Aye.
The vote is five to nothing, voting unanimous and it passes. Congratulations, you've got your special permit and good luck with your building.
Thank you so much, we'll invite you over.
We just, the problem is that there's gonna be so much, there's so much demand for your product that it'd be great if you could even have more, but you've done well with this. Yep, it looks really nice.
Thank you so much.
Looks really nice.
I'm over anytime, thank you so much.
You bet, thank you.
Good night.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff, thanks, Mark.
Have a good night.
Good night.
The next order of business is public comment on any matter that was not raised in the meeting today, tonight. So if any member of the public wishes to speak on a matter that was not before the board tonight, now is the time to do that. I don't see anybody raising their hand. If not, the last order of business is items not considered in the last 48 hours or new business. I'll just give a quick report. At our last meeting, we spoke about the fee structure for special permit applications. I said I'd meet with the, with the town staff as well as the chairman of the planning board. We had that meeting earlier this week. We came up with a, where staff is gonna review this, but with an agreement in principle to have $500 instead of $300 application fee for commercial products and for larger applications and that for single-family homes and duplexes, owner-occupied, single-family homes and duplexes, something in the 150 range. Staff wanted to take a look at that to see what that would do to the budget and the likelihood of reducing the costs. And I think we'll hear back from them, but we'll have something more formal in the next couple of weeks. And I'll report back to you at that point. And we can talk about the relative merits of, of the proposed fees. Maureen and Rob, does that accurately reflect our discussion and where we're at? Okay, so we'll probably put that, let's plan to put that on the October 13th agenda. So we said we try to do it in October, early October, and I think we can probably meet that deadline. Good. All right, is there anything else that people wish to discuss? Mr. Maxfield?
One, I'll just say thank you for that, Ms. Chair, I like, I like that schedule, that's a, that's a good fee schedule. The thing they wanna, I wanna ask is I don't know if you guys noticed my, my change of scenery here. I moved my computer around, I've moved it out of my room, so on and so forth. Just, I mean, it's reminding me more, what, is there any, any updates on, on what's gonna be happening with returning to in-person at any point? I, I, I have a, I can't help but have a suspicion that the expiration of the virtual meetings is set to February, right when, coincidentally, we'll see a spike in COVID numbers and need to extend it again indefinitely. I'm not, I, I, is it, is it mandated that, that we be? Or is it, is it mandated that we be remote, or is it simply an option for us? And is that something we want to, the board want to start discussing for maybe as we go down the line? Especially if, if this ends up getting extended, because I know I personally, I, I didn't just join the ZBA to do Zoom meeting bureaucracy personally. And maybe other people did, I don't know, maybe that has an appeal to someone. But, you know, I, I, I for one would like to, like to get, get in person with everybody at some time in the foreseeable future rather than distant. So I, I don't know what people's thoughts are on what they would want to do with that, one. And then two, if we even are allowed to do it. Does, does anyone have any information on that or any thoughts on that?
You know, I, I don't, I don't know if the, except I'm, I was under the impression that we needed to still do Zoom, but Rob and Maureen, what's the, what's the direction, number one, from the town and number two, from the state?
So the state is offering the ability to continue with the remote meetings through next year. And I think Dylan, you know, like we saw twice now, the decision to extend it comes, you know, the last couple of days leading up to that expiration. So I guess I wouldn't expect anything more than that next round. But as far as locally, at this point, the council has made the decision that all boards meet remotely until, you know, another decision is made. So certainly this board could, if they had an opinion about it or wanted to, you know, share that and, and make recommendations to the council to reconsider that. At some point, they certainly could do that, but that's where we are today. Nobody, except for the council, is meeting in person. And that mainly has to do with being able to offer the remote means as well. It's a very complicated, you know, endeavor to bring, bring in the staff that's needed and to be able to host the, the meeting remotely and in person concurrently. And we're just not able to staff that for all the boards and committees. So we'd be giving up the remote portion if we were going back to in-person meetings whenever that occurs, unless there's some new solution that's found between now and that time.
So it's a real question for the town, the hybrid meeting is expensive and we don't have the bandwidth and/or the personnel to do the hybrid. You want to do a hybrid meeting, at least for the time being. I'd love to be all together with everybody, but I, I think that the town, I would assume this town would want to keep the option for people to, to comment or to report in on, on a remote basis, right? Yeah.
I think, I think that would be the, the suggestion at this point, yes.
Well, so what we could do is we could raise our fees to like maybe $1,500 and pay for the bandwidth. We could do that, right?
Sounds like we've got some more money coming.
I think, I think that new money is already spoken for. I think it was already spent, but yeah, that, it's really a question of dollars, isn't it, Rob, right now, in staff time?
In, in staff time, you know, it requires at least one IT staff person with every meeting to make sure that that's, you know, things, things go as needed for the council. So, you know, when you think of the 50 or so committees that we have, if, you know, any number of those decided to do a hybrid meeting, we could never, we could never staff that and, and support that.
So Dylan, I, I really do sympathize and agree that I, I desire to be in a, a face-to-face meeting. I haven't had a single meeting that I chaired. I've been, a board member had, you know, face-to-face meetings, but I haven't chaired a single face-to-face meeting yet. And I think it's, I, I, I would really like that not to be my legacy, the Zoom chairman. So, but I just don't think, right now, that the town is ready to let us back in. Rob's points refreshed my memory from a discussion with the town councilor I had about it not too long ago. But I would sure be nice to see your faces in person.
I think Tammy's raised.
Tammy?
I, I also, I, I love the idea of meeting in person, but I will say that the Zoom meeting makes it more accessible to many people. And I know for a lot of people driving into town from Boston or wherever they're coming from and then, you know, sitting for two to three hours waiting for their meeting time to come up is a little bit, is a hardship. And I, I personally am very happy that I am not having to go out to my car now and drive home. So, because I don't live close to town, so.
Amen.
Yeah, yeah, so, but I do think accessibility-wise, I, I do like the Zoom meetings for that. I mean, because you can be on Cape Cod or you can be, we can be on vacation. It makes it so that, you know, there's more opportunity to have everybody available.
Long day.
I think there's pros and cons.
I'm gonna take vacation where there's no Zoom, though, there's no wifi.
We'll find you, we'll give you a hotspot, we'll pay for hotspots.
Boy, that's an old technology, I remember that, I remember those. All right.
I'll be in Bonner in January, and if anybody wants to have the meeting down there, that'll be fine. You want to be moving out of the Cape at my house, you're welcome to come.
It sounds inviting. Sounds inviting.
Just one, one more thing I want to mention, I, I, I know it's Thursday night and I, I, I want to go watch the football here, but I do want to mention, because I, I was thinking about this when I was looking at that, that security guard issue from before, of just thinking of, in, in a lot of cases, when we talk about how we do any sort of enforcement, it seems like our only real enforcement is to revoke somebody's special permit, which I think in almost every case is, is a little bit extreme. Especially when you're talking about where people are renting. You say, well, you know, if you don't comply with this, then what, what are we really gonna do about it? I think we should start thinking, maybe have an administrative meeting sometime in the future when maybe we have a lighter workload or something like that. Imposing in conditions, maybe some type of fees or fines should can, specific conditions be violated of something. I, I, the only reason I thought about it was something like a security guard would be, well, you can always say, oh, he couldn't find a security guard, and it's like, well, how hard were you looking? You could have something in there that's like, well, it's a penalty of whatever amount per day that that goes unfilled beyond some day without some, you know, really make some reasonable accommodation, something like that. I don't know, it's something I've been thinking about, because I, I, I don't think we're ever gonna be revoking a special permit, especially to a large residential area unless it was something extremely grievous. So I don't know, have we done something like that in the past? Is that something we would want to consider in the future for imposing on conditions?
No, we're, we're of course speaking in, in a hypothetical here. And something that is a general issue and not related to any specific application, but.
Not this one, just, yeah, just some general thing like that.
You know, I, I think there are, aren't there penalties for violations of some of the, for some of the conditions because they violate the, the building code or they violate other kinds of things in town that we force them to, that conditions force people to comply with? But I don't know about, say, we had a condition that said your grass has to be mowed when it reaches three, three inches, three feet or three inches or whatever, and that isn't done, if there's an ability for us to say, and if you don't do it, that we impose a fine or the fine imposed automatically by law. Rob, is there any, anything like that?
Yeah, any, any condition of the permit that's in violation can result in the fines being assessed. The non-criminal disposition is for any provision of the bylaw, any provision of the conditions of the permit. I think, you know, it does, it does help us to be as specific as you want to be, so, you know, giving deadlines for things to occur by a certain date makes it really clear for us. Because otherwise, we're, you know, we're working with the, the issuance of the certificate of occupancy or some, some date that we're, you know, making up on our own and deciding how much tolerance we give to that or flexibility we give to that. So more specific, the better, but, and to drive the point to the applicant, you can state it in a condition that you're really concerned about seeing enforced, but know that any violation of any condition could, will result in the penalty.
Great. No, thank you. Good question, thanks for the information, Rob. All right, I don't think there's, is there anything else for anybody in terms of comments, questions? All right, if not, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
They're moved.
Mr. Maxfield moves to adjourn, is, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Gilbert seconds the motion, this is non-debatable and requires a roll call vote. Chair votes aye. Ms. Parks?
Aye.
Mr. Maxfield?
Aye.
Mr. Meadows?
Aye.
Mr. Gilder?
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you all, thanks for your hard work tonight. And Rob and Maureen, can you stand for just a second? We'll stop the recording and just have a quick question.